7:30, you'd like to get started. I see we have quite a few folks here tonight. We'll give everybody an opportunity to address the commission. I call it order the July 19th, 2017, planning commission meeting to order. The first item on the agenda are the minutes from the June 21st of the year, and they were sent to you for your review, commissions, leations. If there's any further conversation on it, your motion to approve it.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Third. The next item on the agenda is public comment session. We'll go over a few rules real quickly tonight's event. Obviously, it's going to be a long night here, so it's very critical that we got to stay in tune with the process. The first public exception comment will be open here in just a second. If you are here on a particular application, I would ask that you, if you're sure you can talk this course about the comment session, if you're here on a particular application, I would ask that you hold off until then because we're going to give you an opportunity for public comment for that particular application. So it will be limited to three minutes, your conversation or your comments tonight. We will be timing that. I will try to give you a little heads up in the immediate period of being rude, putting you all out, so the last thing I want to proceed is just in the best interest of moving business along, so I want to ask you to keep your comments in check. I open up for a public comment session. If you state your name and your district, please, for record.
Neider, who was yet to discuss. Gentlemen, this is just a reminder, we've gone through some tumultuous times here in Rappahannock from the last year or so, but what I'd like to remind you all that you have lots of tools. Any application that you have in mind, you can help modify it to make neighbors or maybe people are trying to run a bed and breakfast or parting place or whatever it may be. You have lots of tools to make it work, whether it be lights or hours or number of people, et cetera. Use those tools. Also, there's nothing wrong with having the community come back to you after some of these things are going on and tell you if it's actually working or not. So a review after a year or two years of something in existence can be done and should be done. And I think those things should be covered. They should have to come back before you all, and the neighbors should be able to tell you if they have a problem. Because sometimes they don't have the guts to talk to whoever owns the property or they know that they aren't going to get cooperation, but they'll get it from you all. So anyway, I just want to remind you, you have lots of tools. Use them, and use them well, and I know you'll use them wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the first public comment session? Stand, state your name and your district, please.
I'm Bobby from Woodville, Lake Stonewall, Hawthorne District. I've been a formidable conservative all my life. I don't apologize for it. I don't like government involvement, never have, but it seems to me that there are necessary evils in life, and we have to live with them. And the process of filing a request for an exception to zoning ordinance is a one-time event, and if you make it unnecessary, you are not doing your responsibility. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir?
Paige Glenny, Jackson District. Good evening. I'd like to address the comprehensive plan. Gentlemen, you have yet to complete your review and amendment of the comprehensive plan as required by state statute. It is years overdue. Your work to date has been plagued with the words, "Without performing the surveys and studies required by state law." The Virginia statute states 15.2223, "And the preparation of a comprehensive plan the commission shall make careful and comprehensive surveys and studies of the existing conditions and trends of growth and of probable future requirements of its territory and habits." "In the preparation of a comprehensive plan, the local planning commission shall survey and study such matters as the use of land, preservation of agriculture and forest land, production of food and firework, characteristics and conditions of existing development, trends and growth," and it goes on and on and on. You gentlemen and others have stated that you believe the plan is good and has served the county well. Where is the data to support your case? If you compare the principles and policies of Chapter 6 to the changes in the county over the last 20 years, it is difficult to see where the plan has successfully met its goals. The number of true agricultural operations has decreased. Agricultural land is being used for events, not agriculture. Ridge lines now have residential structures. The county's fiscal situation is challenged by limited revenue sources and looming expenses. Let me be clear, I support the goals, principles, and policies in the plan, but from a results standpoint, it is hard to see where the plan has produced the desired results. Yes, there are many factors that are not under the county's control, but you haven't reassessed the situation or proposed changes to the plan accordingly. The unintended consequences of land use tax reductions and the 25-day rule, coupled with real estate values that exceed agricultural economic constraints-
Thirty seconds, Mr. Chairman.
-have created a tax haven for rich metro area retirees. The county is rapidly becoming the Hamptons of the Piedmont. The recent income disparity data published in the paper show that the county population is moving toward a few rich people and some low-income people that cut the grass and hay, clean the houses, and make the food for the rich people. That kind of community was not envisioned in the comprehensive plan. I'm going to skip, I'll give you a hard copy. I understand that you are properly compensated for your- not properly compensated for your time, and that doing this analysis is time-consuming. Simply expecting an overworked county administrator to do this work was unrealistic. You need to reach out to the numerous people that have asked for action and issued and volunteered their time and resources. Leaders recognize their limitations and are willing to able to capitalize on the ideas and experience of others. Please seek those people out, establish your groups to assess where the county is, what the direction we are heading, and propose ideas that help us meet the goals of the comprehensive plan that we share in that area. Thank you.
Anyone else in the general comment?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Gus Forbush. I live in Wakefield District. I see we don't have a representative here tonight in Wakefield. How can you fairly determine what's going on in Wakefield District tonight if anything comes before you in Wakefield without a representative?
Mike Seawee, Stonewall, Hawthorne District. I want to mention something a little more general. Hopefully, all of the gentlemen on our commission are aware of what's going on in our neighboring county, Pulp River. I'm speaking of that application that's been in the works for several months regarding a Muslim mosque. What I am saying has nothing to do with the pluses or minuses of having Muslim mosques in that county. What I am asking is are our ordinances up to date? Are our comprehensive plan current and up to date to avoid what's going on in Pulp River County? There are lawsuits involved, the Department of Justice is involved doing investigations as we speak because the county was help-prepared for such an application. Hopefully, your answer is reassuring and that everything is peached. I hope that's the case, and I think we need to be on record to be sure that we are protected physically and legally, not, again, to talk about the merits or demerits of such an edifice being constructed, just so that we have our eyes down to these parts. Thank you.
Anyone else? Chairman?
Sharon Pierce, Piedmont District. And I appreciate the opportunity to address the planning commission. I also appreciate the service of the planning commission as a public servant and not really compensated. I've been there, sat there, I know what it's like. But it's in the finest tradition of Rappahannock County as a position of public trust. We trust you to uphold our ordinances and to defend our comprehensive plan. If an application comes before you and does not fit any of the ordinances or within the perimeters of the comprehensive plan, you have one choice and one choice open, and that is to reject it. Or, say, come back and let us do our work and amend the ordinances if you see a need that the ordinances do not address. Specifically, what I'm talking about is I'm talking about the Fletcher application, and I appreciate that it's somewhat difficult. We all have friends who we have, you know, we close at the betting courts. We also understand that there is need in this county to have large packs of land be a bit more productive than they are raising now. I get that. But to have an open-ended application like this and to approve it and pass it on to the Board of Supervisors is simply, in my experience, 32 years here, 10 years on the planning commission, two terms as chair, simply unprecedented. And I think, given that this application was not complete, it doesn't specify who the leesies are, and that is not obligation under Section 170, you have no choice, and I believe it's, again, back in your ballpark tonight, you have no choice but to reject it as the ordinance stands. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Phil Flynn Hill. Mr. Chairman, one of the basic underlying principles of the American democracy is private property rights, and everybody who owns property in this county has a right to the peaceful enjoyment of the natural surroundings that we are blessed with. Any property owner which allows, without any type of control at all, the right to exercise as a right to pollute the air, to pollute with light, we don't think that that ought to be a matter of right. Any specific public purpose ought to be given a special use permit. We have that system established in the county. And anything that is allowed to escape a piece of property and infringe upon the right of other people is trespass. That's another very important factor in our American democracy. Light and the sound, noise, those are things that will trespass on the private property. I think it should be a matter of everybody's concern and not just the right of any one person to do anything they wish.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll finish the first public comment session and turn to old business. Special exception 170401, St. George Farm LLC, tax号3938, containing 150 acres. Zone 8, Agricultural Piedmont District, desires special exception permit to Stewart Field Traffic Parks Festival. Use allowed pursuant to Code Section 170, 36H, with additional standards, Code Section 1752, 1769E of the Rappahannock County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before opening up the public comment, I would recognize that the Fletcher family is here, and if you have any comments, would you state your name on the record?
Anyone else here as an opening statement?
Hello, members of the board and chairman. My name is Philip Fletcher, and Bill Fletcher is my father. But at this time, I do not come to you as a dog or a man, I come to you as a daughter of Rappahannock. I love this county, and I treasure its history, beauty, and difference. But with these things comes a cost, and that cost is livelihood. Our younger population, my generation, face a dilemma, and that dilemma is convenience, opportunity, and connection to the rest of the world. Do not get me wrong, there is a certain pride that comes from living in such a place, a place of nature and of having communities that only a small town can provide. But this is not easy. It is not easy to make a living here. Farming can no longer provide for all of us, and to travel so far to merely make ends meet is something that not many can choose. That is why this proposition has been made. I have read all of the concerns, and I understand the reasoning behind them. But this is merely a starting point to see what we can accomplish. I will not hide from you the fact that this is done for profit. Instead, I will point out that this is also done for the community, to bring people together, to introduce job opportunities, and to take the first step into bringing the rest of the world into our lives. I won't tell you that there are not consequences and sacrifices that will have to be made to make this a success. But I look at the opportunities presented, the opportunities to start off with events such as bluegrass music and maybe even a renaissance spirit can easily turn into opportunities for nonprofits, for speakers to come and share their successes, and for our community as a whole to grow and spread in a controlled way. The proper safety precautions for our neighbors and our land will be held paramount. We do not wish to destroy the land my family has treasured for nearly 300 years. Instead, improve the general well-being of the entire community while also taking care of ourselves. So that is our allegiance. Thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective on this proposition and my vision for our community.
Thank you. I will now open up public comment for this particular application before we turn to the commission for discussion. Again, I'll remind you, three minutes, I will try to give you a little heads up, and prior to the three minutes, we're going to have to look at that very closely. Again, I open up public comment session for a special exception of 170401. You'll state your name and your district, sir.
Before we start the timing, I'm not going to- you're on time? No, I'm asking for point of order. I need to nugget in if you could. I can get it from somebody else who's not there for the conference. But Mr. Fletcher did talk to you for a long time at the planning commission meeting in May, and he talked again at the board at this meeting. So asking for an extra minute, I don't think is a terrible thing to ask. It's because three bites of apple, you get two, we'd like to have an extra minute.
You've got about two and a half minutes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I live in Stonewall, Hawthorne. I wanted to make a preliminary note about fairness. A couple of years ago, an application by Mr. Cliff Miller came before this commission for a special use permit for his dairy barn. It was for 15 events per year, maximum 237 people coming into a gravel parking lot on a four-lane highway. This commission just arrived, I think, put them through the hoops for several months, including fire and safety issues, VDOT review before approval. I have the final application here in front of me, it's half of it, and it is a solid, thorough coverage of all the issues. Simple thing, every event, people drive in and go to the barn, period. By contrast, the two-page application for you tonight is one for expected 31 events per year, an expected maximum of 8,000 people for eight of those very diverse events coming in off into a field from a two-lane highway. On May 17th, this commission met, Brandon Fletcher came in to present the application, the planning commission spent exactly one hour and one minute on it, and then recommended approval. I'm not going to articulate here any conclusions about why there was such a difference in treatment, but I think it's fair to say that we and everyone in the county expect and demand equal treatment for every person and every application, no matter who the applicant or the affected neighbors are. The main issue, in fact, is from the planning commission, May 17th. Here should have been the recognition that this blanket application is a new thing. Mr. Light expressed his fundamental concern then about how the county issues a blanket permit and nevertheless exercises the required oversight over each event so that required conditions are met. In the end, the county attorney was to look at whether the zoning administrator could review and issue permits for each specific event if the blanket permit is in fact issued. He said yes in a memo. The answer, however, is no, as stated in the letter posted on Board docs, and Mr. Gifford Hampshire, Art and the Firm of Blanket and Key. He shows it under Virginia law, precedent from the Virginia Supreme Court, and the county codes that it would be illegal for the Board of Supervisors to grant a blanket special exception for multiple events to a private landowner, I should add, for his profit and to the extreme detriment of his neighbors. And to have the individual events be permitted or approved by someone else in zoning and vendor's favor, to do so, illegitimately delegate the legally mandated oversight duties of the board. It would also circumvent the due process rights of Rappahannock citizens. Today, we found on Board docs, Mr. Doster Fly, dated yesterday, but posted today, I think. We've not had time for council to review this, but they are, I know that they are in fundamental disagreement with Mr. Goff. I would suggest that these issues of legality out there, that this new type of application needs to be tabled until there is a resolution of some sort. The letter from Piedmont Environmental Council, also posted on Board docs, said it's very concerned, among other things, by the types of uses being proposed and scale of proposed events. In fact, the council states that the application is completely inconsistent with the intent of the code of Rappahannock County, the comprehensive plan, and the ability of local infrastructure to sustain its impact. That's a quote from them. These are changing times, there are serious issues to be addressed, including, no doubt, the economics of the county. This is what the planning commission and the board should be doing under their statutory duties, addressing the balanced development of the county as a whole. Granting the Fletcher application would not only be unlawful and very bad to the neighbors amounting to a taking, but it will also be inadvertent general policymaking through a piecemeal precedent setting and dangerous decision that the planning commission and board will very much regret in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jamie Fletcher from Woodville, Virginia, and I would like to make some points and point out some details. Some concerns people have had about the event, whether on Stewart Field or the application process, have been that it's on the two-lane highway. We were working on that, we're making the entrances bigger. There are actually two entrances to that field, but only, everyone only knows one from the Fourth of July. We were going to make it bigger, get the VDOT over there, see if it would settle any concerns, problems, whatnot. Another issue people have had would be noise and lights. We were, I believe in the application, we set lights out at 11, music off at 10. That would give everyone eight hours of sleep at most, or at least. Another concern people had was just general safety, fire concerns. The field is about three miles away from emergency services and the volunteer fire department, and there's a stream about half a mile away from the field. And quite honestly, if there's a fire, easy to get to a stream, easy to get to a fire department. Security, oh, sorry, excuse me. Security, we would think that, say, a medieval festival or a bluegrass festival, people would either bring their own bodyguards, balancers, or we could introduce the fire department. We also found that, going back to fire and safety, that with the Fourth of July, damage to the stream has been minimal, to none that we can see or find. Supposed to the thing would be tourism. Quite honestly, heat iron, I'm sorry, I'm struggling to word here, ecosystem is just less and less. Someone else pointed out only the rich are getting richer, poor are getting poorer. Well, hopefully with this, poor would actually make some money, people would be able to talk, exchange ideas, get more job opportunities. Another thing would be employment options for the younger generation. Most people are leaving, that might be younger, just because they don't see a future and just working on a farm or cutting grass. It's just sad. I mean, this is beautiful, beautiful community with wonderful, wonderful people, and nobody is supposed to say that I helped it. They had, and quite honestly, having an event in a field is a much better way to spend your time than cooped up in the room playing video games or just being introverted. Oh, also, we've also already shown that the events can happen, and though everyone enjoys the Fourth of July, we also had the Peter Festival a few years ago, and the race track in Long Island. We've shown that the piece of property can be used in beneficial and helpful way in which people can have a good time. Now, I hope that's answered some concerns, or put your mind on ease with others, I hope you all have a good day.
Thank you very much. My name is Charlie Joplin from the Piedmont District. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking to you as one of the, if not the, closest neighbor to the property in question. My home sits less than 200 yards from the location of the stage where the Fourth of July festivities take place, and we believe, like everyone does, that the Fourth of July festivities provide a wonderful opportunity for the Rappahannock community to gather and celebrate the greatness of our nation. This nonprofit fundraiser for the Sperryville Fire Department is a fantastic, community-focused event, and the fire department should be commended for this day-long celebration. But for us and all the other neighbors whose homes and properties surround this property, this isn't a day-long celebration. In fact, the Fourth of July festivities are a First of July, Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, and even Sixth of July festivities. The monumental work associated with preparing for and recovering for such an event spains many days and nights of construction noise, bright spotlights shining directly into our windows, and the howling of hounds on the property who seem traumatized by the ongoing commotion. With all due respect, one neighbor shouldn't be able to dictate how many hours of sleep another neighbor gets in a given night. We, of course, gladly accommodate all of this because of the great benefit this once-a-year charity celebration provides to the people of Rappahannock County and the Sperryville Fire Department, and because we know that significant law enforcement will be on-site to manage traffic and security issues. But if it takes a week of work to set up and break down an event where 1,000 or 2,000 people are present, how many days or weeks of loud work will it take to set up and break down events for 8,000 people? We'd like to play a video that shows footage that was captured on the Fourth of July, just so you can see what our family and other surrounding neighbors experienced throughout the day at our home. The constant roar of bands playing all day long reverberates in every room of our home, and when we step out onto the porch, we hear each and every word clearly due to the volume and proximity of our home. All of this occurs on our neighbor's property and benefits-
One minute.
Sorry, one minute, and benefits him, but we are the ones who are harmed by the noise, the lights, the traffic, and more. And I speak to each of you individually as members of this planning commission and to everyone here when I say that none of you would want this taking place 200 yards from your home 31 weekends a year, much less one weekend a year. And Chad Griffin has volunteered to give up his three minutes to play a video for you if that is amenable.
Hold on one second, please. Gentlemen-
Yes, sir.
Just ask a question of the commissioners. That is important for all of us, and do you have the opportunity to see that?
Yes.
Yes. I have as well, but Mr. White, is that a no?
I did choose.
State your name, please, being you're going to be the presenter.
Sure. Chad Griffin with Piedmont, you all, whatever.
You can step right up here so we can see that.
Sure.
So this is the night, the light shining in on the 3rd of July.
This is from your house?
This is facing out from our home.
This is facing out from our home, onto the neighboring field from the bedroom, and this is from our porch. This is from porch. May I just show you, even after the sun goes down, this is not facing the event. This is, and only recorded on a cell phone, not a professional recording device. Here are the lights from the event as the event is taking place from our bedroom.
I'm going to yield back to any more of our time.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. I hope to be of welcome and nice, and to deliver the letter to the Board expressing our deep concern about how the application would rather than change the territory of the area and how the application should be denied due to the overly broad scope of the application. But I would take a couple of minutes to make some additional kind of personal comments. We own Millie's Cabin across the road from Thornton Hill, and about a quarter mile up Brown Road on Field and Mountain. It's a small cabin on 68 acres of skinned woodland and fields where the Shannon Doers can be seen within the distance. We consider it the most beautiful place on Earth, at least east of the city. We're just millers. We were told this old home in Rappahannock County built in the 1740s. So we not only became Millie's owners, but its stewards. We spent close to a year and more money than I care to recall restoring the home and making it more habitable. We shored up the collapsing roof, uncovered the original ceiling beams, reappointed the two chimneys, and made a myriad of other improvements. We wanted to ensure that Millie's would be standing for another 200-plus years for generations to come. Now we learn that we could potentially be living across the road from festival grounds. Even though we cannot see any sign of civilization from our home, we can hear the road traffic, the animals barking, and the Fourth of July festivities sound like they are in our yard. The sounds echo off the methods. We're okay with this, but we will not be able to live in the cabin with even a thorough ex-application approved. Even weddings with amplified music within a field, the clothing and the scratting. The reason why, that's the reason why we're here. Can you imagine having a heated barbecue, relaxing in a glass of Virginia vodka, in your Adirondack chairs, watching the sunset, and watching the blueberries feed their young as the birds feed them, while having, celebrating the times come on blasting in your ears? This may sound hokey, but this is the scenario we'll be living with. Instead of passing Millie's down to our children, we will sell. So I can't imagine that anyone would purchase them across from festival grounds. Thank you.
Ma'am, if I could get you to state your name, your district, and Mr. Leight.
I'm Annie Candy, and I'm in Piedmont District.
Saw a hand over here.
I have a couple of questions if I might, and this is for Jamie, I believe.
Ma'am, Sergeant, you're correct, President of the Commission, this is not an open discussion.
I'm sorry, what?
He can ask.
Oh, okay, I'll ask you, you'll ask him, is that it?
Make a notation of it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, the question is, according to the original application and statements by Mr. Fletcher and also by Mr. Goff in his opinion, it says that Mr. Fletcher, Phil Fletcher, intends to lease the property to event organizers. Now, as I read our zoning ordinances, it is just, that starts with requirement number one, the name, the financial backing, the address, and permission of the property owners, but of the people who will actually be running the event. Is that correct?
That's in the orders, yes.
Beg your pardon?
That's in the orders.
Thank you, it is in the orders. Okay, could you ask if that's changed?
This is not a relayer, you can make a notation of that. That's unqualified. Are you done?
Pretty much. I mean, I could go through the sections, 170-52, on and on. You all know it, you should know it, this application does not meet those. And I appreciate what it would be like to be next door and listen to this music. It's not 31 weekends, it would be breakdown time. But additionally, it's our orders. If you all feel there is a whole of your essence that needs to be changed, then you need to do it. You need to change it, go through a proper procedure, have a public hearing, but you can't just say, okay, well, we like this guy, let's approve it. Can't do that, I'm sorry.
Rick Kohler, Jackson District.
I object to a blanket approval for continuing special exception for tax map 39, parcel three, and the festival field parties fair shows, weddings, and the like. The zoning ordinance requires events like this to be approved by Board of Supervisors on an individual basis. It would be difficult for zoning administrators to administer permits that might even be illegal for, as I English it, under continuing special exception for every event the applicant desires to have, particularly as they will likely be managed by outside vendors, coordinators, producers, and showmen. The 1858 survey platform offered no topography, only vague and drawn areas by the applicant and as of little value and unsuitable in its scope. Regarding proffered restrictions, the applicant notes, quote, "vendor-provided lighting will be turned off at 11:00." This has no effect on RVs, campers, and festival attendees, personal spotlights, irons, headlamps, et cetera. The minimal noise, the minimal provision for noise states, quote, "event music and noise will be turned off at 10:00 PM." This does not apply to attendees' personal music and noise, such as boomboxes, drones, guitars, radios, stereos, shouts, or perhaps even drunken drawls, nor does it address the sound of RVs running their generators. The applicant identifies his home as adjoining the property, yet incorrectly marks it on the map as being on the subject property, see B, my residence on the map. The applicant's property does appear to adjoin across the Thornton River and over a bridge from the property, perhaps a mile or more by road. While his home partially might technically adjoin, practically, the applicant will not be on-site to, quote, "manage the entire event and be available for any issues that may arise." As where no cell service in this location will be equally difficult for organizers to contact the applicant, or for that matter, contact rescue, EMT, fire, or police assistance. We tend to think of Rappahannock as a place defined by borders, mountains, rivers, farms, forests, villages, churches, and country stores. I see Rappahannock as a community, a community of people. I tell others about Rappahannock, I can't help but say what great community it is. When you go to a theater, restaurant, meeting, or event, or simply to the dump, people are talking to each other. They wave to each other along the road. I shocked the plant by waving to a state trooper, he waved back. But I've waved to you around here. We don't all know each other, but we all share a beautiful way of life and a beautiful place, and mountains, races. We have no sludge, streams and rivers are clean, the stars shine the hills and the east coast, and the moons are in nightlight. We, the people, is Rappahannock. We are the people. How does the application force fit? Well, many cars and people will flood even out of our midst to camp, have large events with music, party, create noise, shine bright lights, obliterate our village's cars, light fires with this field of forest fires in dry times, and quickly string our landfill, police, EMT, and rescue units. Restores.
Finish it up there real quick for me.
Does it fit the compound? The businesses of Rappahannock stand to gain. Events like this are self-contained, with food and drink vendors, souvenir sellers, other balloon rides, beer and wine gardens. People camp on-site with tents, they do not use the facilities or the equipment. Businesses of Rappahannock, they don't stay in our B and Bs, and they don't use our stores. So I'll stop, I have more, but I'll stop.
Thank you.
Mary Kugelstone, Alamo Park District. I'm here tonight to help protect and preserve the scenic and tranquil nature of Rappahannock County. A landowner submits a special exception application because he wants to use his land for a not-by-right use. This request can be granted if the proposed use meets all of the standards of the Rappahannock County Code. There are ten general standards in addition to which all special exceptions must meet. Three of those were not included in Mr. Fletcher's application, and so I'm not going to comment down them. There are signs, ground, and surface water, and landfill, and all of waste. There are seven remaining standards which I feel like I can't comment on. Standard A is proposed use will not adversely affect the neighbor's use of their property or property value. With the noises you heard from the Fourth of July, that's happening every weekend for eight straight months, it will affect my quality of life and my property value. B is traffic generated will not be hazardous or conflict with existing traffic. If you have 2,000 cars leaving an event at exactly the same time on 5/22, you are going to have traffic problems, plain and simple. And Mr. Fletcher's application, he indicated that's a straight road. Yes, it is, but it's also on Thornton Hill, it's a hill, it's a double Y line, and the traffic's going 55 miles an hour. C is parking. Okay, I'm going to give you parking because on this little map, yeah, those squares is park, I'll give you parking. That's the little map. E is the future impact of this use. If approved, this application will set a preference, an unwanted precedent, for future applications that are going forward. That's unacceptable.
One minute.
G is emergency services, how they're affected. Again, if you have 7, 8,000 people in an event which is double the size of the population, it's going to affect the emergency services. And I hope Matthew Black will talk a little bit more about that. My favorite is standard I, which is undue impact on scenic and historic quality. I'm going to tell you, if you have 40, 50, 60 porta potties out there, it's not scenic and it's not historic, and it just ain't pretty. J is the use cannot be detrimental to the implementation of the Complimented Plan. As we all heard tonight, the Complimented Plan is about retaining the scenic agriculture quality of the county, and these festivals don't do it. There are some additional standards which are supposed to be meant for field parties. Four of these require plans to be submitted. I have to object to what Jamie said because there are no plans submitted with this application. So there's no B dot plan, there is no health plan, there's nothing submitted, so I can't even count, you know, just the.
Thirty seconds.
And also, there are statements that were required to be provided, so there were no statements either. The only statement that Mr. Fletcher put in his application was that he basically advocated all responsibility for these events and instead returned it over to a third-party vendor. That was his statement. So the proposed use does not comply with the standards set forth in the Rappahannock County Code, and therefore I ask you that you please do not have this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
James Bus, Piedmont District. I'll keep it real short. Rappahannock County is one of the few beautiful cities in the star-spangled skies of the smallest places left in the world. The Rappahannock elders put in place ordinance to keep it that way, but that is now threatened by the special exemption application 170401 for several reasons. It would allow even unknown events of up to 8,000 people to attend. You can only imagine what that might be. Mr. Fletcher's application filed, like most of these ordinances, including, but not limited to, 170-52 and the addendum for field parties. My particular concerns are the loss of peace and quiet from event noise during the day and well into the night. Offensive lighting, car headlights, a loss of dark skies, the beep-beep-beep from rubbish and porta-john trucks, one lane eachway, Route 522 traffic, safety is a big issue, unprofessional campfires, firework safety, if any, ensuring forest fires. And the big one is liability, liability and injury. I've seen cases where people fake injuries, and they have fake back pains, et cetera, and they continue to sue and demand money and support for loss of work for the rest of their life. One big case cost my father over $26,000. The liability issues, Mr. Fletcher's application says he's not accepting liability, and he's passing it on to the unknown vendor. And who's responsible? Who has the financial resources to actually cover any injuries or any damage that is done? If somebody gets hit by a car exiting at night, who's going to pay for that? I can tell you right now that we had an injury in our property when my wife and I were splitting firewood, we were on firewood. She broke her finger. Blue Cross wouldn't let it go. Blue Cross came over and over again to demand, who's going to cover this? Who can we sue? Who can we go after, even though we had the insurance and it's our property and our accident? This can happen to you too. So somebody has got to have at least a liability on this, who can cover the lawsuits from Blitzrask or the Shield or the hospital? And who can cover any damage if the whole place burned up because of terrible fireworks? There ought to be at least a demand to have a bond issued if, for example, a limited liability has no assets to cover it.
Thirty seconds, sir.
I believe Mr. Fletcher's application could jeopardize the current use program by leasing out his land for commercial use, commercial activities, and I don't want to put that in jeopardy for all the farmers. This application sets a dangerous precedent in that anyone could submit an identical application, and if you approve it, they could get it approved, they could demand approval, and they could do any unnamed event they want, just like this application. You've got to pin down the uses and know what they are, and don't give blank. You're advocating your responsibility to review these applications by giving it to Mr. Fletcher to let him decide what applications he wants to run that are undefined. You basically legally can't do that. So I asked him, the planning commissions, to reject this application as well.
I think that's. Sure. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Black, I live in the Piedmont District. I'd like to comment on a couple of things. First of all, it's hard not to notice the stark contrast between the benefits of a couple of people versus the costs that can be borne by them. It's a pretty steep trade-off we're facing here, whether it's noise, congestion, and safety, and so forth. But I'd like to focus on the safety issue. I'm a volunteer with the Sperryville Rescue Squad, and over the years, I've become very sensitive to the safety. And I'm concerned that an event like this, or actually a proposal for maybe up to 31 events, and some of them quite large, some of them several times larger than a Fourth of July event, are going to have some, may have some unintended consequences. Who is going to respond? Well, we were told that the Sperryville Rescue Squad and Fire Department are three minutes up the road. That's fine, but if we have multiple events throughout the summer, fall, spring, with 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 people, the likelihood of having a demand the likelihood of having a demand or a unit is is quite high. And I know for the Fourth of July event, we had a fully staffed ambulance on the scene for the day for the fourth. That takes one unit out of commission and of course we brought in other volunteers to try to help out. That is for a special occasion. If we do this weekend after weekend, it's just going to it's going to pose a real burden. And somebody somebody needs to think through and come up with a plan beforehand if we're going to have so many large scale events. Is the event planner or the Fletcher's going to pay for some extra EMT quotes to 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 manage this? Because they're going to have a symptom. In some cases, they're essentially going to have a county, a second county in one location. So who's going to handle those kinds of eventualities? If they don't pay for it, do we raise our taxes so we could so we could get some more personnel? Another two hundred and fifty thousand for an ambulance so we could handle the extra burden? Or do we leave it to the rescue squads and let them decide who they're going to respond to? Run down to the down to the festival and help somebody or do we go and save our save some neighbor with a heart attack down the road? With that, it's a sort of untenable position to put our our squads in. So there's there's some real tricky issues here that I think require some careful planning. And there's there's some costs. Someone's going to have to pay these costs. Neither's going to be an individual who's not being cared for adequately elsewhere in the county or it's a cost that taxpayers are going to have to pay for extra services or the event planner is going to have to pay for. Or we just don't do anything, but someone's going to pay for it. Now, there's just a cost out there waiting to happen. And there's an analogous issue with regard to other kinds of safety and that is what the sheriff's department is concerned with. With thousands of cars going in and out every every, you know, several times during each season. Who's 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 making sure they get in and out okay? Do we need somebody patrolling the scene? I'm not real comfortable hiring private bouncers, as mentioned. But there's going to be a demand on the sheriff's department. So do we raise taxes?
Thirty seconds.
Got you. Do we raise taxes? Do we just let it go? I know the Fourth of July, somebody we all know was was in a serious accident on the way to Fourth of July celebration. Somebody tailbum, T-bunged. She was unconscious. So so accident safety is a real issue and there's going to be a demand. Who's going to pay for that when you're at the scale and complexity, open ended nature of this kind of proposal? So I hope you take that into consideration, serious consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bird.
When I came to Rattanahack, it's gone on twenty years ago now.
Just state your name.
I'm sorry, Monica Ward.
I don't hear you all.
Sparrowville, Virginia. I when I came here twenty years ago, there were born here's and come here's. And I think now it's sort of born here's, been here's and come here's. I think I'm getting into the been here category, so maybe I'm a chicken and tiger in the style. But one had and I came in with lots of granted ideas and John McCarthy used to regular roll his eyes when I'm sure up here I'm talking. And I've learned a few things over the years, so clearly not enough for our weekly speaking tonight. But one of the things that has bothered me over the years, I have community patients agency, we work with the government. We talk a lot about how to solve problems out of the world. And one of the things that has bothered me a lot in recent years is that we seem to think there's one solution or another. We need jobs. So that means manufacturing or that means an event like this or that means this or that or the other. When in fact, there probably are solutions that we could find working together to try to identify. How many jobs do we need in this county? What are our skill sets? What are the age of the people who want the jobs, need the jobs? What are the the real needs of this community? I know we have commissions and we probably look at this sort of thing in the past, but I want I always find that the animal park got there, quite gotten there. And I would like to see us look at what it would take to comprehensively, whether that's probably a comprehensive plan or simply a bigger volunteer effort on the part of a lot of smart people who are out here with their careers in this area, to try to try to solve these problems in a way that doesn't pit neighbor and hence neighbor and doesn't allow one person's gain to be someone else's property loss. I live in a very small intersection, you guys have heard me say it before, but there was a four or five event a year activity there when I first moved there and the person wanted to expand it far more. And the name was objected and it never happened. We worked it out sort of among ourselves pretty much. But when that happened, my first fear was my property value was unfulfilled as well as the inconvenience of everything that that I was feeling already from the condition of that. So, no, that wasn't the solution. We offered to help that guy do something else, be an adversary in other areas. We got together and tried to provide some other solutions to him. And I'm just it just makes me think that there isn't just one way or the other on any of this. And what passionate support of open land, dark skies, of the quality of life, the quiet that we have here. But we we have big problems, we have big challenges and I don't think we can just put our heads in, you know, the sand and hope that it gets better. I think it would be great if, when challenged with things like this, we could get together around bigger solutions. I wish I could offer more of a framework for that, I'm just encouraging more people to get involved.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sure. John Williams, St. Juan, Haxman, my thirty-sixth park of sixty. I just hope you guys have a serious look at Rattanahack County. Because in nine years I've been there, I've seen a lot of wrecks. It's between my house and Sparrowville. There's spotty cell phone service in there, a lot of folks up at my house can use it some. Please call my phone when I've seen a wreck down the road. And these are the sort of things we see down there. And I have a young child who gets into school, but and I maintain about a hundred and twenty-five yards of highway there for my league for visibility. And it's not for looks, it's for visibility because you can get a sinking feeling in your gut when you pull out on that driveway. Because they zip from Woodville and Sparrowville directions back and forth really fast. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Any others?
Yes. And in general, I just want to say that this application is a good wake up call for Rattanahack County. Because we really don't have a policy that should deal with these applications. To say that, you know, because of farmers not saving much money, which the county's covered up with farms and aren't giving much money, they should have, you know, some that have events. That's that's not going to work at all. And there's a lot of things to consider in terms of development of policy parameters, what kind of ways to operate on these types of applications that we, you know, look at the size of the road. In other words, if somebody lives on dirt road and they want, you know, that's one thing. If it's on a four lane highway and they want to dance up the other thing, five twenty-two is a major road. That's another thing. And at any rate, I know that the applications are already put in and you can't do things retroactively. You're going to have to deal with this application as it stands. But I do think that this is going to hopefully spur us to implement some kind of policy where we can have guidelines to deal with these kinds of applications.
Anyone else?
Now close seventeen oh four oh one public comment session. I'm sorry. I woke it back up for.
We have some press graves. I own a drawing property. My son and my little grandpa live there. And of course I oppose this because of the safety and environmental. And you can relay this to Jamie. Unless a child or an adult chooses to watch video games and stay inside all day, that's it. You know, there's no excuse because we have a hundred and ninety-three thousand miles of national parks on back doors. There is no reason, that's not a reason, to do this. There's no reason, I face it.
That's called. Raise your hand way up. Close public comment session for seventeen oh four oh one. Turn to the commissioners. John, this is obviously in my district. Just a couple of comments before I open up the discussion. I want to thank you all for your comments and this is commentary we would have liked to have heard at the first meeting for whatever reason, I want to revisit history, but this is good for good information for us to consider. I know my phone has been lighting up kind of from focusing on both sides of the issue. It's been very informative for me. I want to use an analogy that one of the commissioners used, you know, it's kind of like a ball game. It's not any game, but a third in here, got an opportunity to to look at this again and reevaluate it based on new information. A lot of times we don't get new information and I think that's important for us to consider. Just another comment before I I would like to hear from the other commissioners before maybe I dive into some of the my thought process, process my thoughts with regards to this new information. I I still believe the this venue and having the experience with the Fourth of July event, being a member of the Sparrowville Law and Fire Department, I'm not, I'm on that committee, literally give up about four or five months of my life starting in January to get to that. And I'm not looking for any any comment on that, but I say all that. I I hope I can bring some good conversation as to that event because that appears to be the event that everyone is using to to get as an example as to how this could be exacerbated. We had multiple events like the Fourth of July. I I just do things about the Fourth of July event with regards to the lighting. I just like to say that those lights come on in the last firework, isn't that all? And that is a reason for folks to get in their car and go home. A long few days and everybody wants to go home. So the lighting of that shining in the neighbors, it's good information for me, you know, that's from a personal standpoint. It's for hopefully next year's event, if it's helping. Gentlemen, I would turn to you all further. I'd just like to start maybe down at the end, work my way back this way.
Certainly. I feel that we're in a situation now where the true import of this particular application is beginning to be appreciated. And I feel that it is a time that we need to basically create a protocol as to how to deal with this kind of application from the point of view of the emergency services, law enforcement, Department of Transportation, because every location is different, because every the the conditions around it are all different. And but that this kind of input from the Department of Transportation, so of law enforcement, emergency services, the neighbors also, and it should be relative to the number of people, the kind of incident that is going to happen, noise, light, whatever. And that in the absence of this, no good judgment can be made about any particular piece of property and how it fits. And consequently, I would feel that as then this goes back to Mr. Glenny's idea, that this could be one of the first new ordinances and protocols adopted by our comprehensive plan to meet this new problem that we are confronted with. And I think it's telling that there are a number of other event destinations on the docket for hearings at the same, not tonight, but in the works. So that it seems to me this is the time to deal with it and create an effort to responsibly address it. And I don't think it can be expected to happen quickly and easily. So that I would say that I think that this application ought to be either tabled or denied until a comprehensive protocol is developed by the county and all of the requisite organs in it that would be involved.
Thank you, Mr. Bird.
So when the planning commission first heard this application, I think it was May seventeenth, I felt that we gave the applicant the benefit of the doubt when we forwarded it on to the board supervisors. And that was on June fifth. And I think it was at that meeting that we really, that the board supervisors really heard from the community in earnest. And so that now that it's back before the planning commission here on July nineteenth, which is a good two months later, you know, again, the community has turned out to express a lot of their concerns. My concern is that in that two month period, there just really hasn't been a whole lot of there hasn't been a whole lot of movement on the part of the applicant. Some of the restrictions we put forward or we cited or conditions when we moved it forward had to do with a B dot review. We haven't seen that. A security plan, and we haven't seen that. I think we're still sitting here at thirty-one events, which we all know people have an issue with, at least many in the public. And the size of the events and the life safety concerns. And the management plan. It's too broad. It needs a lot more work and but if it can be done in the context of Mr. Bird and Mr. Settle's concept of trying to look at this thing comprehensively, then, you know, we can we can work on it that way. But I just think if it's before us here today, as it's before us here tonight, it has it has some real problems. And I would echo Mr. Bird's sentiment that we need to table it so that we could work on it or it's going to come to a vote. It's got some very serious, the application, I think, is a very serious hold thing.
Mr. Bird. Governor, Chairman. I guess I'll I'll start by saying, you know, in our last meeting, I struggled a bit trying to sort through this and trying to strike the balance that we're called upon to do. And, you know, I'd like to just repeat the fact that I feel like there's some kind of path forward here. And, you know, I reject any notion that's been suggested that any particular favor was given because of the applicants here. But I would also note that much of we all appreciate and respect and trust what the Fletcher family tends to do here, we can't, as it's not as our job, rely on that. We have to put forward general standards and requirements at the at the ordinance. So more more to the point though, I struggled before with the what I understood to be the logic of the ordinance. I'm no lawyer. I'm not going to debate the whether the dilutive applies or any case law. But it's now become much clearer to me what the common sense logic of that ordinance is. It's very clear to me that it was written for individual applications, for individual events. Now, that defies logic to some extent because that sounds awfully inconvenient. Why is it inconvenient? It's inconvenient because it's very hard to understand what different events, different uses, different kinds of field parties, different kinds of activity can be required. So that also explains, it seems to me, why recognizing the logistical challenges that provisions added to allow an occasional administrative permit on a limited basis for property. So to me, the logic of the statute, the the ordinance has now become very clear whether lawyers would agree or disagree on it. It seems very apparent that the way the statute, the ordinance is written, it's just like every other use that you you, you know, other use, that you, you know, it's written as field party, not field parties. It's, you know, and it's very clear that the additional requirements have to do with provisions that are unknowable until an individual event is put forward. So, regardless of whether it's legally allowed for us to, for the supervisors to delegate that responsibility to the zoning administrator, I don't think it's at all advisable. And this gets to, you know, if we were, if we had enough clarity around the use and numbers and the application was much clearer than it is, you know, maybe we could get to that point where there's no legislative role being delegated to the zoning administrator. It's more of a, you know, if it does this, check the box, you know, ten, does it or doesn't it have, you know, ten porta potties? Will the porta potties be out in five days? Something like that. I think we could consider we get to. But this is where I think it comes back to the problem of this application. As much as I would like to think there's a path forward, the vagaries of the application just don't allow us to really respond to it. And, you know, I know that since the last meeting, I've tried to sort of think about how we might parameterize this and come up with some kind of general standard. There are just too, just too many of those. And frankly, it's not our job to kind of come up with, you know, what the boundaries are within which the applicant could do anything they want. So, I absolutely oppose the application as it's before us tonight, and I appreciate everyone's opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. As it stands now, the ordinance allows any property owner to have any size event once every three years. Couple of years ago, I was shocked to find this out. There was a armed man event down Fallow Mountain Road down Angus Hill. And it was found, and I was shocked about that. And that's why when Mr. Jones was acting in the county, he moved around with his events because property owners were allowed to have one unregulated event of any size, maybe three years. So, the whole county is open if you have any size property on any road to have an unbelievable event on that property, at least once every few years. And whether it's twenty-five acres or a thousand acres, that can happen anyplace. So, and more and more people are hearing about that, and there are more inquiries about that going on. So, that's some little tidbit there that I think most of the citizens here don't realize. And William County doesn't have any control over that event. So, it has happened, will probably happen more again. Mr. Fletcher and his sister talked a little bit about the property here. And I've been over the farm for a number of years. It's interesting to look at this property. And I believe Jane's and Lil's grandfather's photograph is right, painting is right there, passed this on to their father. And I think it was about seven hundred acres in farm, I might be off of seven hundred. And looking at that farm, there hasn't been any changes to that farm. No new houses built, no new barns built. And probably, I don't know, close to a hundred years in that property. And they just basically maintained the property as it was given to them. And I know Mr. Fletcher's intent, Bill's intent, was to pass the property on to his kids. And Mr. Parrish made the statement that, you know, just because you can't make a living on a farm doesn't mean you can have events. Well, I guess if you don't, if you have problems with income, making a farm pay for itself, you know, you can subdivide it, which a lot of people have done, or you can put an easement on it and take taxpayers' money for that benefit. And they've chose not to do those things. Now, you know, I don't know what the future holds for the family, but in Bill's ownership of this property, he's increased his landhold. He bought the top of Turkey Mountain, about three hundred acres, I believe. And so, I think there's about a thousand acres. So, in his tenure of ownership, the benefits to the community has increased here. And now, we look at this piece of property here, and when we had it here before the planning commission a couple of months ago, it was advertised. I know there was, with safe made, apparently the advertisements and notices that the planning commission had no parts in. And the turnout in those meetings was nominal, and that was unfortunate. But this property does have a history of housing events. The hunts, races, goes back for decades. The Fourth of July now, I'm believing, ten years, eleven years. So, this property has demonstrated the ability to house people for events. And I think it's, it makes good sense for the county to have some place if people are looking to have events, to kind of drift them towards instead of knocking on doors on back highways and looking for a one-time venue here and there scheduled across the county. So, being five-twenty-two, closest area to these kind of things, I think it's a beneficial area to have. Now, there was problems, I think, issues with the items included in the last application. And I think if some of it was wording that Bill used, he used the word hunting in there, and it wasn't. I don't think it meant to be hunters with guns. I think he was referring to foxhounds, but that wasn't explored more. And camping was not a campground like we think of. And I don't think those issues are valid things that he held onto. And people made comments here tonight, you know, about creating a new ordinance and things like this, which will take time. You know, we've been struggling to get minutes published with the planning commission that months passed due. So, we're doing a new ordinance, to even with the present things that we approved, to get advertised, and the board's going to take months. So, you're talking about something that's not going to take three months, it's not going to take six months. It's going to get put off two years, and three years, and four years before we get done. This is what we're looking about.
Good job. That's what your job.
So, anyway, so I can't get any time required here to do a new ordinance. It's going to take a long time. And I think, as a landlord, I think he's entitled, this size property, to some consideration for the size of property, for the history of it. And I'm not talking about thirty-one events. I'm talking, you know, a single-digit number of events, substantially reduced number of people, to let him get his feet wet. And I think he's probably talking more about weddings and festivals. To get his feet wet, in the meantime, have a review period, one year, whatever. In the meantime, the board can, can, can work on doing a ordinance. And while we're doing that, he's allowed to gain experience and knowledge on what needs to be done. Have the site small enough to where it's a very, very nominal impact at all on the farm rescue and these issues. And basically, let him work with the neighbors tomorrow on this and see how it works out. And have a year review and move forward about it each year. In the meantime, the planning commission can do what we need to do.
I agree with much of what you said about kind of easing into this, a reduced cycle and, and events. I appreciate that. I think that's certainly heading in the right direction. We're, we need to even support that kind of consideration. I think there's some critical pieces here that are missing. You don't have anything resembling a real site plan. You know, it's, it's not clear from this thing. You know, there's, there's general indications of where, you know, certain things typically happen, but there's really no plan with respect to specific routes of export, anything close to what we have traditionally required for this, for this kind of activity. So, while I think there's room to proceed incrementally, A, I don't think we can ignore the ordinance that we have now, which I think frankly prohibits us from, or we could provide an inventory, planning approval. And B, if it were to prove it, I would still want to see much more specificity about what the actual events are going to be or not going to be, and what the site is going to look like, and what measures are going to be taken with respect to all these issues that we've talked about. It's not enough to say we've got a four-wheeler and a stream, and we can put out any fires that may come off. I mean, I just don't think that's anything close to the standard that we have historically subjected these things to. And while I think there is an answer out there, I don't think it's our job to come up with it.
Well, how many people attended the farm last year?
Approximately four thousand.
I think if you allow Mr. Fletcher to have an event here and cap it at three hundred people, that that property can absorb three hundred people very easily. And with no impact to the neighbors, and limit it to, say, six events a year for the first year, have a review, in the meantime, we do our work. And if he wants to grow bigger, then he would have to provide safety plans, more documentation for the larger events on the site. But that property can absorb three hundred people and link them up over the hill. And he, we didn't have any problem with the site plan he submitted before. He showed, you know, the layout, he showed the parking. And basically, if you're talking about three hundred persons wedding, you're talking about basically a tent. Well, again, another tent for, for the impact there is, it's going to be over the hill. You're not going to see it from the highway. Will it be noise? Yes. We put limits on the lighting and the music. I think it's, it should be a nominal impact to the limits. And there's not going to be need on a situation like that with the big lights that were there before the Fourth of July. No camping, no hunters.
I like where you're going personally. Sorry, I don't mean to personally, honestly, but I guess the thing that I would, that you haven't really addressed, and I would, there's a lot of examples of activities. You mentioned weddings, Renaissance fairs come up.
Happened to three hundred people. Three hundred people.
It's, it's.
For one day.
I think that I would be more comfortable, you know, what the, what the, what kinds of events we're talking about. We're really talking about a spec hair music event, a wedding, you know, a festival. You know, the problem is, there are potential sporting events. It's not clear, the examples that are in the application are, I think, get to most of the counts with limited numbers of people. I still, it's not sufficiently clear to me, and I, I could support what you're saying if we could further articulate what kind of events we're talking about.
I don't think it's a lot of jurisdictions. You'd say if you limit it to three hundred people, well, what a person could do, that as long as it, the use is legal, as long as it's legal, as long as it's intended.
Well, when, when you brought up this issue, for example, in the case of, we have dealt with this in some places, either a wiry or a B and B wanting an incidental wedding venue. You know, everyone kind of knows what a wedding involves, you know, for the most part, and maybe some. This, I don't know what a Renaissance fair would mean.
I say what you did here.
We've got three hundred people. The outside, they're dealt with.
Is it scary? Okay. Let's, let's say the wedding's only an entry first year. How's that?
I think I did.
All right. He said he was in the wedding first year. He's not getting married yet.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I can't help but think that we're doing the work of the applicant here.
Yeah.
I appreciate the conversation, and I think that these numbers and types of events probably be at some point acceptable once we have the details. Mr. Light points out, and it's been pointed out by many of us here, but I don't even know if those numbers being thrown around are even acceptable to the applicant. We're just not, we need to get, we need to get it from the applicant.
The applicant has had some health issues recently. He has some.
Well, that's the part of, I understand, sir.
Focus is, please, no commentary. It's commissioners kind of.
That's the point I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think that's a very good point. And for that matter, you know, I think the numbers that Mr. Henry sketches out are, you know, in the realm of what could be acceptable without pushing these things out. But I do agree that, as I said before, I don't think we should be the ones trying to, trying to find the right solution to this. I would encourage the applicants to lay out some of those details, clean up the application, give us, you know, I think for that size, my concerns about a site plan would be diminished in some respect, at least with respect to the quality. But, but I certainly agree with the sentiment that it should become incremental.
I agree with Mr. Light and Mr. Wazinski. I do feel that this doesn't, should not deter us from creating a, an organized protocol to use as a guide for future things. And that this would be a great incentive for us to do that.
Would you agree with that?
Chairman, I just have a few comments on, I, the thirty-one events certainly present a challenge. I think we already agree on that. Reviewing the material, the commentary, and the letters, and so forth, I think we are looking at double or single-digit numbers with regards to events. I, I would agree that with what we have in front of us, it's, it's all encompassing. And we, there's a lot of, I've got the notes and stickers on all of us, trying to, to really discern and figure out exactly what impact they would have on that property. What I do know is, the Fourth of July event, there's been a year when we had steeple chase waves, or sports point race, and cougars there all in the same year. And I don't recall any, any complaints with that. So, I think that is a litmus test with regards to the large events. I, I would agree with Mr. Henry that maybe this is a smaller scale. I wouldn't be opposed. I think we're headed in the right direction. Agreed with Bill on this. And maybe that we need to table this application. Here we are in August, or almost August, prime time for events and ready to begin fall. I don't know that we're going to resolve this and get this board for Mr. Fletcher to take advantage of any events come fall a year here, a couple of months, and according to weather. I understand there's another application next month with regards to something very similar. So, what we do tonight is certainly not a precedent. Obviously, we have some precedent set. And we've talked about this, you know, when we consider these applications, it's, it's pretty arbitrary, because maybe we, or we don't have that guidance that maybe is needed in ordinance, a specific ordinance. And I think we have given all those good due diligence, go over, asked all the right questions, and, you know, considering the location, the impact. Everyone is uniquely different. So, and I think this is uniquely different from the standpoint of, and I would say positively, because we have history. And I think there is something workable here with regards to adding the bills there. I think the, I would be opposed to the three hundred number, six events. I tend to agree that the applicant needs to bring to us, knowing the applicant typically doesn't get this kind of feedback to some degree. You have probably an idea of what you have to work there, take that back, and see how that works, how that might work for, for the family. So, this is my comments in further discussion. With that, I'm going to make the motion to re-table this application, seventeen oh four oh one, with regards to asking, we need more specifics with exactly, here, this conversation about the applicant, and how that will work into their profit, profit venture.
I will second that motion.
Further discussion. Further discussion. All the favors, he's about to say that.
Aye.
Phil, can you apologize for the board? You were catching the motion on that panel.
Sorry.
Well, thank you all for coming out. We have a lot of work left to do. I'd ask that if you're getting ready to leave, just to take your conversation outside so we can move on with business. Continuing with business, see next item on the agenda. The Heidi and Desmond Dodd first. Oh, yeah. Special use seven feet oh five oh eight. The Windsor Horno Farm LLC. It's seven feet oh five oh eight, Heidi and Desmond Dodd, and Mrs. Tatch, 18. Three C, this contains 5.18 acres, 10.9 Git Brown Hollow Road. A agricultural, seed conservation, for small parts, E. Myt District. Desire tourist home, use allowed pursuant to code section 170368. The district stands on the code section 1752, 17661.
Thank you. The dots have representation. You have certain states of nature record. My name is Robert Light. I'm an attorney with Lawson and Sillet in Trunk Oil, Virginia. And as you noted, I represent Heidi and Desmond Dodd on today's application. Chairman, members of the planning commission. As you know, the Dots have applied for a special use permit to allow them to use their homes as a tourist home. Now, I don't wish to repeat in detail the application materials that you have in front of you. However, I do wish to summarize a few salient points. I'll ask Mr. Dodd to be my board stand today. So people, Heidi, can see. Everybody, see, get an angle, so. Okay. For the benefit of the public, we took, you have these photos, by the way, in your materials. But for the benefit of everyone here, we decided to blow up a few samples to give a general orientation. Where's the first one? That's the first one, okay? The first one I'm going to show you here has two images. One is, this is the 2014 topo survey of the property. And below is a current photograph of the house showing the northwest elevation, including parking here in front. And this, by the way, is photo number four in your materials. You'll notice the photograph, you have a number and a caption. The next poster has the, there are 2014 house location survey. And here is a photo that looks down Git Brown Hollow Road from the property entrance. This is photo nine in your materials. As you can see, in front of the house is a gravel road. No ruts or potholes or anything visible. I would also note, having driven the road myself this afternoon, I noticed that if you come from Harris Hollow Road off of Main Street, it's entirely blacktop until you, about 600 feet before you reach their entrance. If you come from 211 on Git Brown Hollow Road, again, it seems that the vast bulk of it is also blacktop. And then about a mile of Git Brown Road is, it alternates between blacktop and gravel. Again, it seemed, the gravel portions seem to be pretty much the same quality as you see here. And our final poster, these are photos six and 11 in your materials. What these show is the Dodge driveway and its relation to Git Brown Road. You're looking both from, you're looking here up Git Brown Road, and then you're looking down from where Harris Hollow, where Harris Hollow becomes Git Brown Road, coming from, again, from the Main Street side. Okay. I also briefly want to direct your attention to photos seven, eight, 13, and 14 in your materials that show some of the driveways of the closest neighboring properties. Most of those properties do not have visibility of the Dodge home due to the distance and woods. The one exception, I believe, are the Peters' house looks down. And you will note in your materials, a letter of support for this application from the Peters. Further, as Chief Speaker observed in her letter provided to you, the Dodge home is accessible from Git Brown Hollow and Harris Hollow Roads, is accessible for fire and EMS purposes, and is located within a mile of a water tanker source. As I indicated, both roads are predominantly blacktop. And even as V. Dodd observed in the email that's having the materials, from their perspective, V. Dodd views the proposed tourist home as essentially the same as private residential interest. Now, in furtherance of the comprehensive plan goal of preserving rural character in part for tourism, the Rappahannock County zoning ordinance allows properties zoned in agriculture and conservation zone districts to be used for tourist homes with special use permit. The Dots desire to use their home for a tourist home as a rental income with the system of maintaining the property to a high standard which benefits the community and maintains the renovations that get a few years stuck to the property. As you are aware, the Dots previously filed an application for a tourist home. Now, while it wasn't successful, their application did provide learning experience for them. Further, since that time, it's our understanding that the County Board of Zoning Appeals has approved multiple tourist home permit applications. And the Dots have not only reflected on their own experience in the application process, but they've had a chance to study those subsequent successful tourist home applications. And the result of which is the application before you. Couple of things is, in reflecting on prior concerns that were raised at that time about a brush pile and a fire pit on the Dodge property, those both have now been removed. You'll see that in photo number 12 of materials. And we will also, when we discuss the proposed conditions, we'll also address that again. Also, the Dots took a more proactive approach this time to reaching out to neighborhood property owners by writing letters and emails to let them know about the pending application, as well as providing them with a copy of the statement of justification, which I drafted, which was included with the application. They invited comments or concerns to be forwarded to them or to me. Most importantly, based on that, their study of successful applications and the prior concerns raised, they put forward a proposed list of conditions to be included with the special use permit, which, again, is in the statement of justification. Those are as follows. No meals would be served by the applicants to guests on the property. Guests would have to provide their own food and meals. Overnight use of the property would be limited to no more than six adult guests per rental. The total number of rentals for the property shall be limited to four per month. A guest rules and policies guide shall be maintained of property at all times, at minimum. And in addition, any rules imposed by Mr. and Mrs. Dodd. One, copies of the approved special use permit and its conditions shall be included along with emergency contact information for both Mr. and Mrs. Dodd, as well as any local caretakers or property managers, which they will employ to look after the property when they are absent. And local government information, including fire and police service contact information. A copy of the guide shall be provided to the zoning administrator and shall be updated as, it will be updated there as they update it at the residence. Signs located on the property or on the exterior of the cabin identifying the property shall be similar in design and size to signs customarily used by residential properties in Rappahannock County to identify the name of the residence and the property 911 address. Further, yesterday afternoon, we received a copy of a letter of opposition. And we've had a chance, my clients and I've had a chance to review that letter. And in light of that, we also would like to make the additional proposed of conditions. There are two. And I will follow up with a letter to Mr. Dameron later this week. The first additional proposed condition would be, the guest rules and policies guide shall include a rule prohibiting any renters from the use or discharge of firearms and/or fireworks on the property or any open fires. Number two, the special use permit would be valid for an initial two-year period with the zoning administrator having authority pursuant to the Rappahannock County Code to renew for subsequent periods for up to three years for each renewal period granted. I believe that the zoning office has been provided with letters and petitions of support concerning the plot application. Now, going back briefly to that letter of opposition that we had a chance to review, I just want to discuss a couple of points briefly. One was the, one concern was whether this is a do-over. The Dots, like any property owner, have the right to reapply after one year. This is a new application based on their reflection about their prior application experience, as well as subsequent action taken on other tourist home permits and their study of those. There was also a reference to Virginia Code annotated 152-2283. This is the statutory provision which lists approximately 11 factors which localities can take into consideration in creating zoning ordinances. As the Rappahannock County zoning ordinance demonstrates, the county board supervisors felt that permitting tourist homes, tourist home uses at properties like the Dodge home struck the appropriate balance of factors that are set out in 152-2283. While community input is important, as you've seen, we have continued to consider that and made additional conditions as needed. The statute should not be read to granting neighbors or property owners or members of the community an effective veto on application. There was also a reference that described for the road as a pothole-ridden stretch of road. I think the pictures provided, the materials, don't show such conditions. Again, as I said, I drove it myself from both ends today. While I did see, I did see a few, I did see a couple of rough places in the blacktop. Saw one, saw at least one I would consider a pothole. But as far as pothole-ridden or any ruts or ridges, speaking for myself, I did not see anything like that. So I'm not quite sure what the concern was in that respect. Given the restrictions the Dots have offered regarding the number of guests and the frequency of rental, the intensity of the use of the road won't, would not be of greater intensity than any residential, full-time residential dwelling. As far as the proposed conditions that apparently were included back in 2015, again, we've had a chance to look at those. I would point out that conditions six through eight have already been addressed in the proposed conditions you have for me today. Further, not only is the fire pit been removed, but we have offered a condition that there will be no, that renters won't be allowed to have open fire. There was concern about the septic system. The septic system is not only a new system, but has excess capacity. Given the restrictions on the use that we have in our proposed conditions, there won't be a greater strain on the system. And it goes without saying that the Dots recognize that they have to comply with other applicable laws that impact their property. So they, and that includes any DEQ regulations. Therefore, we would view a condition that says, view a condition regarding the septic system as unnecessary. In a similar vein, the condition regarding the payment of relevant taxes pertaining to the operation of tourist home. My client, my clients are very aware that they have to pay those taxes. And again, it doesn't seem to be necessary for a condition that you would have law. As for the permit running with, as far as the permit not running with the land, we respectfully don't understand this point. As we indicated before, we are offering a condition that the special use permit would come up for extension or renewal, initial two-year period, and then possibly up to three years thereafter. So regardless of who owns the property, they're going to have to comply with this condition. So if there becomes a, if there comes a point where the conditions are not being met, then obviously the extension would be granted. Further, it's worth noting that special use permits pertain to the use of the land, not the identity of specific property owners. Again, as far as, as far as a review of the special use permit, again, we heard what the, we heard the concern, and we've proposed a condition relevant to that. So based on above considerations, the Dots respectfully request that you recommend approval of their application. At this time, I would also ask for the right to respond to any comments here today that haven't been already addressed. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
We'll now open it up to public comment for this particular application, special use seven feet oh five oh eight.
Hi, Gary, how are you? My name is Kier Whitson, and I'm a resident of the Hampton District. I live about a mile closer to the town of Washington than the Dodge's property. I'm speaking primarily on behalf of a group of neighbors. We have George and Cecile Gardner, Sean, Nick, Debbie can't be here, Marion Bray and Andy, Timmy Bean, Michael Bean, Clyde Poland. Letter, as I already referenced, that we put on record yesterday, it's on board docs. I don't know if you've seen a copy of it. We, as a group, oppose the application. It's a reapplication, in our view. Nothing has changed with respect to the fundamental circumstances surrounding the application that the BCA turned down last January. Something else has not changed, and that's our opposition to this. Chairman, I want to talk pretty quickly through a few things. But I want to apologize first because I'm going to create a little consternation here. And I don't know how you're going to handle this. We would like to request that Chris Byrd and John Lizinski be refused from any other consideration of this application, and let me explain why. Mr. Byrd and the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, Alex Sharp, both attended a cocktail reception at the Dots in close proximity to the time that they submitted their reapplication. Clearly a conflict of interest. We don't believe that they can take an objective view in this regard. Obviously, Mr. Sharp's attendance at that meeting is an issue that we'll raise with Board of Zoning Appeals. But Mr. Byrd is a representative of the BCA on a planning commission. And we think it's important to state affirmatively now that, in our view, he should be refused from any further involvement in this, and certainly should not cast a vote. With regard to Mr. Lizinski, following the Dodge's first application, Mr. Lizinski, in a prior conversation with me out in front of the courthouse, mentioned to me that he couldn't see our concern about the relatively small property size of the Dodge's property. And that it concerned him because he himself had a guest house on his property that he might want to rent at some point on a short-term basis. Based on that statement, to me, it's hard for me to imagine that Mr. Lizinski is going to be able to vote in opposition to the application because it would potentially preclude him from doing what he's already stated he might want to do at some point for his own house. So again, requesting a refusal of Mr. Byrd and Mr. Lizinski. I'd like him to know both. I apologize, this is business, but I wanted to get that out the right way before we have any further discussion. I believe that the planning commission has approved a 50-foot right-of-way requirement for tourist homes. I don't believe that that has been ratified. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know if that's the right term. But I believe you approved the requirement that there is a 50-foot right-of-way for tourist homes. If that is still pending, we ask that that's. If that is still pending, we ask that that standard be applied here. And if ultimately you recommend approval of the application, we ask that that application go with the rescission clause that states if the 50-foot right-of-way requirement is ultimately confirmed and ratified, that the peremptive rescinded. And if I'm wrong on any of those facts, I apologize, but my understanding is that that's still under consideration, and if it is finally put into the ordinance, then we, we hope that that will apply here. Our letter of opposition, which was put on the record yesterday, stands on the record in contrast to the letters of support, which in most cases were from people who'd lived nowhere near Harris Hollow. For example, people who live far down at 231 Susan Hoffman, married to Mike Binneyak, or a supervisor member of a letter of support. It's unclear to me how she can express an opinion on a property that's located in Harris Hollow where we all live. The people who oppose the application live in the hollow where the tourist home is proposed to be operated, and I ask that the, the finding commission give greater weight to our letter of opposition than support provided by people, one of whom I met this morning, Tefillup, who admitted that he signed a petition of support, not even knowing where the property is located. Finally, in closing, I have an ad from last week's Rappahannock News. This is Rick and Kay Kohler's real estate ad. They're great ads, very clever. Right in my white notices, actually, one listing native plants and a vegetable garden surround this charming home on eight acres, blocking distance to a national park trail, perfect for Airbnb weekend getaway or peaceful country living. There are two things, one of two things going on here. I would say at best, this is presumptuous false marketing of properties to potential buyers, on the false premise that there is a buy-right opportunity to operate Airbnb in the county, which of course there is not, and that's why we are all here and why we express things like we are doing tonight. At worst, I think it is a disservice to the folks like the DODs, because it puts them in a position of believing that they've been buying property and operating as Airbnb because of ads like this. Not all real estate agents in this county are doing this. It is not a coincidence that the Kohlers sold the property to the DODs. And with that, I know that some of my other neighbors may want to add, but I do hope that you'll address in the best way possible my first request, which would be the refusal of the two members, Mr. Byrd and Mr. Lizinski, of the reasons stated. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I came forward, last thing, my heading down, just a couple of comments on that. First of all, the Airbnb comment in the paper is a property that is an Airbnb, so it's not a suggestion. Two, we were the selling agent for the cabin and someone else, buyer, interested. They've done what we've done with the cabin. I wanted to just clarify a couple of things. The distance of the driveway from the top of the hill where people come over to the hill, last time was this quarter of 15 feet. It measures somewhere between 200 and 300 feet. I went and measured it afterward, I don't remember my error. So there's not the danger of car suspension and the hail on a small child getting killed or anything like that. The Virginia Department of Transportation has done highway studies, road studies on Git Brown and Harris Hollow, and my father-in-law said they actually do want to come in that cabin because it's a midway point, and there's an average of 38 cars a day that go by the cabin. So it's not heavy traffic throughout. That's basically my comments.
Yes, I'm running the van, that's from a living Git Brown hollow. Been there for over 20 years. And our hollow is changing rapidly, more than most of you all know, especially at the entrance of the Git Brown. We do now have a vineyard that has promoted more traffic and yet unsafe traffic, meaning people have been, had to veer off the road from outgoing cars from the vineyard. I have a concern of houses being purchased in the county and being turned into Airbnbs when the, when the owners are not here to oversee them, take care of them, oversee the needs of their guests. And in this case of the DODs, they have an amazingly beautiful cabin that they have worked and restored amazingly beautifully. But they're not here, they're in South Africa, and I would say if something like this were to pass, that their cabin is managed by somebody here locally to tend to all of their guests' needs. I receive calls in the middle of winter, at a snowstorm time, by Heidi asking for me to try to tend to one of her incoming guests. It's, it's not appropriate. I'm not even near Heidi. I mean, when it comes time for a snowstorm, we look out for our neighbors that are around us. There's no way I can go into the middle of that hollow to tend or to have a driveway shovel for a guest. So, so before we lose our houses, the DODs, it would be wonderful to have, to have us neighbors here full-time. We would love that. But we can't afford to have a lot of our houses just purchased and then turned into Airbnbs, because what happens to our neighborhoods? And so that, that's what I have to say, and I think we'll be back on another note to talk about the vineyard at another time, but because, because I'm the point person for that, a lot of people are coming to me asking me, "Are you having trouble?" Or, "What's having trouble?" So that's, that's coming, but thank you very much.
First of all, contrary to Mr. Light's representations as to how the applicants have made this extraordinary effort to reach out to the neighbors, we've never met them. We weren't given notice of this application. We weren't given notice of the prior application. How far away are we? Two driveways. 50 yards, 100 yards? So I think, I don't think they've provided adequate notice for this to even go forward. Now, if we don't count, fine, but I'll make my following comments without waiving the lack of notice. Nothing, nothing against the DODs, again, we haven't even met them. Nothing against the great improvements they made to the GORC cabin, that's terrific. That's not the issue. The issue is, is, and again, without waiving the notice issue, we sign on to the letter submitted by, by Mr. Whitson on behalf of other neighbors. We don't think the application meets the design or the performance standards. Just looking at the road issue, the hill between Git Brown and Harris Hollow is known as Maker's Hill, and it's a very steep hill, and it's a, in effect, a blind approach to the subject property. It wasn't until, I don't know, I'm sure my other neighbors can check me on this, but I don't think the hollow even connected until, I don't know, 50 years ago, something like that, because of the terrain. So it's a steep hill. Yeah, one day, Git Brown is, is, in this area is gravel, and there's a reason, that's because of VDOT. It doesn't meet any standards whereby VDOT can do anything more with than gravel. And so it depends on what, you know, day of the week, what week of the month, what month of the year you happen to be traveling on it as to whether it's full of potholes or not. It just depends on what's greater lasting by. And that's fine. I'm happy with it. So the bigger point is, is quality of life, that's been touched on in the prior application. Why are we in Rappahannock? Well, we're in Rappahannock to get away from commercial development. So that's why we're in Rappahannock County. And why are we in Git Brown, five miles behind town of Git Brown Hollow? Well, to live away from any commercial activity. And let's, let's just state the obvious, this is a commercial use. It's a commercial boarding house. Oh, but it's limited to five rentals a month? Okay, so five, or four rentals a month? So four one-week rentals a month? That's that month, and then the next month will be four one-week rentals, and so, so it's, you know, 52 weeks out of the year. There's no requirement that the owners live there. Third point, the real gorilla in the room is Airbnb and other online short-term rental platforms like Airbnb. They came to the General Assembly a couple of years ago and stuffed a, you know, draft legislation along with a campaign donation, no doubt, in the pockets of a couple of our state legislatures, and they almost ram-rodded it through, but at the, you know, 11th hour, it was stopped. And the effort was to take control away from localities. That was Airbnb's approach, and it failed, unfortunately. So gentlemen, you have, you still have control. And, and reflecting on Commissioner Byrd's comment on the earlier application, the problem is your house isn't in order. You're going to get a bunch of these. A bunch of these are coming, they're in pipeline, and you need to get your house in order as far as the regulations and the performance standards before you rule on this one and any others. And I have some draft performance standards from other localities that contain such things as no more than 30 days cumulative rentals a year, that the owner must reside at the premises as their principal residence, so they must be there more than half a year, things like that, that may, that, that would lessen the impact and, and greatly reduce the impact in that the rentals would be far fewer, number one. Number two, you've got, yeah, okay, you've got the owner with a, as a neighbor, the owner's there, as someone commented on previously. So, so I have these, these draft ordinances, and second thing is, if you look at 15293, this is a new statute passed by the General Assembly this last session, which allows for the creation of a registry for short-term rental property. And I suggest that that be passed as well. So you have the performance standards and the registry going hand-in-hand to really strengthen your, your rulebook going forward. Again, there's going to be a floodgate opening, and you need to get ahead of the curve, some type of submission.
Thank you, sir.
Sean Nick, Hampton District, there for today. I have a lot for my father-in-law and Jason Landowner, who cannot be here to see. My comments are this, this is no more than what Mr. Whitson said, going to redo from the last time. The last time the DODs applied for this, they did not notify a neighbor. They applied, only did we find out it was coming up, and we came in, then we tried to agree, and then we agreed with this group. The same thing occurred this time. Some of us got their letter via email. Some of those who don't have email access, such as my father-in-law and Timmy Bean, who isn't here tonight, got a certified letter from the post office that they probably very rarely get that they had to go sign for. Harris Hollow and Git Brown Hollow doesn't have that many neighbors. All of us live within probably two miles of each other. It's not that hard to stop and knock on the door and say, "I'm the new neighbor, nice meeting." I've been in this county for 26, 28 years. That's just how easy it is. If that were done, George Sonnet and Wendy would have been met. They're two driveways down, right beside the K-Tops. That's the first thing. Nothing has changed about this property since the last time we were here. You all know this road. It's very dangerous. Their hill press approaching Git Brown from Harris Hollow sits just like this. You all know, no matter what time of the year you go up through there, as George stated, what you're going to meet. This time of year, it's tractors with spears on them moving hay. Prior to that, they were pulling baleers to go bale hay. So then you have the farmers going over to check cows from one side of the mountain to the other. For VDOT to say or for their attorney to state that that driveway is no different than a private residence, I beg to differ with you, because we all know each other, and we all get to be used to when our comings and goings are, as most people do in this county, and you learn the area. Now, if you rent a place four times a month, most of those people are going to be from outside of Rappahannock County, probably from North DC or wherever, or Maryland. They're not going to pay any attention to a tractor or what any of that buddy else is doing going up and down the road, or how narrow that road is in front of the house. Now, that road is nothing more, it may have been perfectly manicured by VDOT once in the blue moon when those pictures were taken, but it's not a pothole-ridden, it's a washboard. It's a washboard. And I guarantee you, if he rode down at the season, it was a washboard because of that rain we got last night. So as I state, nothing has changed. Number one, they didn't try to come talk to the neighbors, once again, as was brought up at the last meeting. Number two, the road conditions hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed is this. They put a front porch on the house bigger than the existing front porch it was that was on, which makes the house sit closer to the highway, which is probably 20-some feet from the edge of Git Brown Hollow Road. It's so close that the motion detector light comes on when you drive by during the day or night, and the driveway is so accessible that the people who mow their grass can't even get their Chevrolet dually with their 16-foot trailer in the driveway to mow the grass, they have to park on the road, and we have to drive around. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is George Gardner. My wife, my wife Cecile and I are here to oppose the application this evening. We are the next mailbox down from the DODs, and we've been here for, I'm roughly a long time, came here in 84. We've seen the county change an awful lot. We came to the county because of the rural nature of it. We love what's here, we love our privacy. One of the things that concerns me is the potential for 48 rentals within the year that will bring quite a bit of traffic potentially into the very natural hollow that we're up in. I have concern that people from out of the area, if they're interested in getting up into the park, there are basically two routes that they'll go to get there if they're not familiar with the area. One is that the Harris Hollow Trail was right, which is right just the other side of the top of the divide, and the second is to walk down to the access road that goes up into our property from Git Brown Hollow itself. That road is a old logging road that is a right-of-way that actually goes up to the park boundary itself, and we've had folks come in over the years that have attempted to go back in there, and I'm concerned about additional traffic coming in and people that, with no malicious intent, but are nonetheless trespassing on us, which we would prefer not happen. I think the, Sean spoke to the condition of Git Brown Hollow Road. It is a very dangerous transition from Harris Hollow into Git Brown. The road is frequently rutted, washed out, et cetera. As Sean said, if you drove it this afternoon, the road does have gullies on both sides in terms of wash from the rains that we've had in the last few days. VDOT gets around when they can to regrade it, when it gets particularly bad, but it takes continuous maintenance. So we are opposed to the application, and we hope that you all will deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
County Stonewall Hall. My family's been out here in Rappahannock, bought property, my very mother in forty-eight. So yes, we've seen this county change, traffic. Seen this town change, traffic. But I'm speaking in support of this tourist home, I don't like the tourist home. Basically, on the premise that, you know, Rappahannock County says our three values are scenic beauty, tourism, and agriculture. I've been a tourist. My family and I have gone, since we live here in Rappahannock, we go to the beach, we rent a house, we eat in, because it's so expensive to eat out, but we do eat out occasionally. We go pretty much the outer banks, we've gone to the Wright Brothers Memorial, Harris Light House, and Jockey Ridge State Park. And while there, we spend money to gift shops and the sights that we see. So that area benefits, and I think our county can benefit from it as well. And I hear you all object about the traffic in the hollow. I mean, I grew up in an old hollow, and I know about the traffic. But restricting or denying this approval, I don't think it's gonna restrict traffic in that town, in that road. It's a state road, you can ride on that road all you want, if you have a map. I had... I worked on the cabin two summers ago restoring the log park. And I got to see cars going up and down, and many repetitively because the bridge was being repaired on the Harris Hollow side. And I was surprised how often one particular car was going in and out. I saw tractors, four-wheelers, lawn mowers, hay trailers, and so on going in and out. Plus, on five different occasions, tourists would stop in front of the cabins, and they would ask me where Mount Marshall Road was, where the Brown Town Road, I think you'd call that the Harris Hollow Road, and also Little Devil Stairs. And on one occasion, people asked me where Kezer Hollow Road was. And like I say, you're not gonna restrict the traffic by denying a weekly rental. I mean, you're gonna have two or three cars, the Dawgs live there full-time, they're a family of four, and they could physically have four cars. But anyway, I'm speaking for the board. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Marion Breck, and I live in front of the Gardeners and next to the Dawgs. And I'm opposed to this application. I didn't realize how bad the traffic was from people from out of town until the vineyard went in recently. And I can tell you, I've been run off the road a number of times since they opened that place. And people from out of town have no respect for people who live there. They don't respect wildlife, they drive so fast, they don't care, and they don't get it. And I just, I don't really wanna drive around. I don't wanna be run off the road anymore than I already am with this vineyard. Every time it rains, the road washes out completely. There are times I have to put the truck in parallel drive just to get home. And the road... I like it that way, it's why I live there. But it's not really conducive to people who are not accustomed to that kind of road.
Thank you.
K. Coler, Jackson District. Don't you think that would have surprised me, but that's okay. The... I think that our comprehensive plan calls for tourism and agriculture. We need to support our local businesses, tourists support our local businesses. They buy at the local stores, they go to the local restaurants, they go to the theater, they're over down in Union County, they use the park. I've gone to numerous B&Bs myself. I just can't imagine that they're... that the people who would use them are as offensive as some people might think. If somebody's living in the house full-time, there's gonna be just as much traffic if you're living there full-time as if somebody's renting the house for a week, or a day, or two days, or whatever it is. I think that we need to support our comprehensive plan. I think we need to support tourism in the county. It is one of the few things that provides some income. And I think it's important, Rick. I know that Airbnb has some issues nationwide, but... and I know that it's normal in the county. But I think that it's a wave of the future, and I think that the county needs to be able to accommodate tourists, or we don't, we can't even accommodate our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cecile Gardner, and one of the reasons that I oppose this application is because, number one, we have no idea what people are gonna be there, and who's gonna take care of them if they have an issue, if there's an emergency. This thing about calling K. Coler or whatever doesn't work because by the time they get there, something could be out of control. We don't want people that are gonna come in and out. Every weekend is gonna be somebody new, and, you know, some other challenges and stuff like that. And the road is an issue, I don't care if people say it's not, it is an issue. I don't know how many times I've come down that hill where another vehicle is coming at me and is almost whiting me off the road. And when you have the big vehicles like Sean was talking about, the tractors and stuff like that, it is very dangerous. People that come to stay at places like that, they don't know the area, they don't know the traffic and all of that. If K. and them want to have B&Bs next to them, that's fine, they can have it if you do. We're choosing not to. We're choosing to just have our own place like the way it is. We moved to Rappahannock County, as my husband said, in eighty-five, because we want a quiet, peace and quiet. We don't want people coming up our road saying, "Well, where's the park? Let's walk off the road." We have dogs, we have, you know, and I'm not gonna allow that. But people that don't live here and live in South Africa don't know if there's an issue, how are we gonna take care? It's not up to us to take care, not up to us at all. So I oppose it.
Thank you. Yes. Just wanna briefly respond to a couple of things, if that's all right. Sure, yeah. First of all, there's been some concern talked about caretaker. As you will note in our conditions, we said as part of the rules guide that would be kept both with the zoning administrator and at the Dawgs' home. The name of the caretaker or property manager would be, and their contact information would be listed in there. No one is asking the neighbors to look after my client's property. The others... The other thing I think it's worth mentioning is, this is the Dawgs' home. This is not an investment property. This is not a property... This is not, they got a house elsewhere, and this is investment property involving Rappahannock County. This is their home. Yes, they are away from their home... They are away from their home for part of the year. But this is their residence, they don't have another residence. This is their... This is what they call home. And it's not uncommon for people, you know, with employment and everything else to be away from home, you know, very often. The... Those who signed the opposition letter would note that they did get the notices. We... My clients used email or certified mail, depending on what they felt would be the best way to get to the money. One gentleman indicated that he got a notice of email. Father who did not have email got a certified mail. My clients tried their best to send written notice, so... and give them a copy of the statement of justification, so they'd have the detail, and they'd have my contact information. Mr. Sonnet indicated he had not been notified. I apologize for that. My clients indicated they previously tried knocking on the door, introducing says it wasn't home, it happens. But Mr. Sonnet noted that we both work in front oil. And I don't know when he got notice, but certainly he could have picked up the phone and talked to me about it. And the other thing is, and finally, as far as like... Speaker made a comment about, you know, you need to do this and that in terms of your... in terms of the zoning ordinance. With all due respect, you have to decide the merits of this application on the basis you have and the balance struck based on what's been passed. And now close...
Wait a minute, Mr. Chair. Conick from Stonewall.
Probably just gonna get through the line.
I'm gonna see what that... You do better. Well, I'm gonna object to that, too. I don't know if I'll get it done in three minutes. You have to give the equal time to what Mr. ... the applicant's got. Anyway, members of the Planning Commission, some of you may recall because you were on there at the time that the amendment about the acreage requirement was adopted in July, June of two thousand and ten. And the Board of Supervisors referred a bunch of amendments to you, most of which were cleanup amendments about the state code. And they did that at their meeting on June the seventh, two thousand and ten. And you all had a meeting to consider them on June, I believe, the sixteenth. But I'm gonna just ask you to table this, so that you all can find it in your own minutes or verify it. But you have a meeting on June the sixteenth, eight days after the Board of Supervisors meeting. And as I think, since we've been through this drill numerous times over the past few months, the state code and the county ordinance require, that's section fifteen point two, twenty-two oh four, that before an amendment to the zoning ordinance can be passed, it has to go through two public hearings, one at the Planning Commission and one at the Board Supervisors. And the notice has to be given, has to be advertised in the paper for two consecutive weeks before the public hearing. And you can do the math. The Supervisors proposed and authorized Mr. McCarthy to advertise a public hearing on June seventh. And you had your meeting to consider those amendments, including the one that reduced the minimum acreage from ten acres to five acres in conservation and two acres in agriculture on the sixteenth, which is only eight days later. And the one meeting was on Monday, so this... Your meeting was, in other words, the Wednesday after the week that the Board of Supervisors met. So there's no way, there was only one Thursday in between in the eight days. They met on Monday, so the paper could have only run it one time. And this issue sort of came to light the last time the Dawgs applied. And so I contacted Mr. McCarthy, and I asked to see the ad. And I asked to see the certificate of publication of the ad, which is required to be kept for all these applications. And Mr. McCarthy couldn't produce it. And he said that, well, he didn't keep them after three years. So he didn't have it. And so then I... He suggested I go to the newspaper. And I went to the newspaper, and the newspaper, all they could produce was... I suppose they had changed ownership. All they could produce was the copies of the classified sections for the newspaper. And the Board of Zoning Appeals ad was in there for its public hearing, but there was no ad about these amendments anywhere in any of the June two thousand and ten classified sections for any of the three papers that were between Board of Supervisors meeting and July seventh, when then the Board of Supervisors adopted the amendments. Now, your minutes indicate that you all approved the... the proposed amendments, including the reduction in acreage unanimously. But your minutes don't indicate whatsoever that there was a public hearing, that there was any notice of a public hearing. There was no public comment at your meeting, according to your own minutes. So... And even if you did have a public hearing, it obviously could not have been properly advertised in accordance with state law and the county zoning ordinance, because it wasn't enough time to have two ads before your meeting. There was only one publication of the paper. So I... I'm somewhat breaking tradition, because I usually just coming up next week at the Board of Zoning Appeals and in fairness to the applicants and so forth. I don't wanna spring this on them, but that is the state of affairs. And what it means is, if it wasn't properly noticed, there is a case, Glade Brook with Board of Supervisors of Spotsylvania County. And in that case, it was ruled that if proper notice wasn't given of a zoning amendment, it's void of an issue. So if that is in fact what happened, if there wasn't a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and your minutes do not reflect it, there's not one word about a public hearing in your minutes, that it was open, that there was any comment, it just says the board took it up and passed it. So there was no public comment. And then the Board of Supervisors did have a public hearing in July, but if there wasn't a public proper... properly noticed and properly advertised, a public hearing toward this body, then their truffle is void. And therefore, the minimum lot size is still what it was when this ordinance, this provision about tourist homes was originally put in in nineteen ninety-seven, which was ten acres is the minimum lot size. And I believe the lot size of this particular parcel is about five acres. So it wouldn't qualify. So all I'm asking you to do is look into the matter. That's as much research as I've been able to do on... I just returned to town, and so I didn't really get to work on this before meeting, before you all's meeting. I have put in another inquiry to the Rappahannock News. I mean, the... Sort of became a moot point when I was looking into it last time, because the application, as you know, was turned down. So it was just sort of a matter of interest to me, and then really, it's already over. So then the newspaper was unable to locate their papers for that time period. So they did find some, they found the classified section, but not the rest, not if it was displayed. So all messengers suggesting that you may consider doing, taking it in, looking into it, and getting perhaps a legal opinion from the county attorney whether or not the amendments that reduce the minimum lot size were legally adopted, and the chances know that the minimum lot size is still ten acres where it was before. And this is on DOA. Thank you.
I don't wanna respond to that. Since this is a legal kind of issue, I think the request for a table on its research is inappropriate. The general rule is, is that Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commissions cannot pass, cannot decide issues on the basis of whether they think that the ordinance is illegal or not. He... Conick...
Chairman, this is... This is sort of rebuttal. I don't think...
Well, the appropriate... If Mr. Conick feels strongly, the appropriate means of doing that would be to file a declared void judgment action in circuit court. And of course, you have approved multiple special use permits for tourist homes less than ten acres in size, so therefore, they would all be interested parties. So this will... So I think it will be the circuit court, if this is an issue, would be the appropriate venue for that, not the county.
And now close public comment session. Thank you. Seventeen oh five to eight, turn to the commissioners. Once again, gentlemen, this is in my district. I recall this application very clearly. In fact, I went back to my notes from the last time I was submitted, and I'd be motioned to approve. Of course, there's some new information here, and I'd be interested in hearing you all's comments regarding some of the new information. I'll start the call here. It's up. This is one, twenty-one. Yes. The submission is partial platter, I think. You got copy of that? Can you see it a little? Yeah. Yeah, that's the... What do you mean? That is here. Oh, that's got the... Well, it's separate. Okay. Maybe right there it is, right there, the third one. The third one, third one. That was this one? Okay. So... Okay, so help me here a little bit. Come on, right here. What's this right here?
The hundred feet wide?
Yeah. What is that, hundred foot wide?
What is that, 100 foot wide? I believe if you look like, sort of, it shows setback.
Yeah, yeah.
And you see on the side, and you see on the side of it, it's a 50-foot setback. Side part one.
That's correct.
So when you look at that 100-foot setback, is the house, normally a house is supposed to be outside setbacks?
The answer is whether it's not conforming or not.
Yes or no?
Well, again, the answer depends on whether it's not conforming. Normally, you're correct, if you were doing new construction, it would have to be within the building envelope.
So in this situation here, all the improvements are a violation of setbacks, if it was new construction?
Presumably, I haven't studied the issue under your zoning ordinance, but it could be.
It is. So, this survey here correctly shows that the setback is 100 foot from the center line of the highway. Have you done any title work here on this property?
I have not.
Okay. So you don't know whether 622 is a prescriptive easement or a piece simple easement to the highway part?
I know, all I am, my understanding is it is a state road, whether the source of title is they owned the dirt under it, or whether it was part of the, a lot of these roads are Bird Act roads, so whether this is a, whether this is a legacy of the Bird Act, I don't know.
I believe that I'm not so sure that this is a prescriptive easement here, and that's why I'm not that paid.
While the sovereign can do prescriptive easement, as I said, a lot of roads that existed were brought into the state system as Bird Act. Whether the easement would be either classified as prescriptive or was one they took. Again, like you said, he would have to take some type of.
Well, anyway, it's a 100-foot setback from the center line, and I believe you're claiming a 30-foot right of entry there. So also, your plaque here shows that the setback from the edge of the house to the edge of the state road is 26 and a half feet.
Okay.
Right? See that?
To the 20, yeah, to the 20.
26 and a half feet. So this is really a non-conforming, grandfather setback situation here. And this 26 and a half feet, understood from the letters that Mr. Pullen said here, that your clients have a motion impacted on their house? They, yes, they have a motion, and it cuts along so close to the road, it cuts along the cars nearby. That's another. It cuts along the cars going the same road, so close.
Yes, it turns on.
So gentlemen, you know, we worked on an ordinance here a couple months ago, and we were big time on Fletcher while ago, that we needed to do an ordinance of address, build cars and these kind of issues. But we addressed an ordinance on tourist homes here a couple months ago. And we passed it, yes, it's not been approved by the board, but it said 10 acres is the minimum lot size. Now, to me, nothing's really changed with this application since last time. I mean, Mr. Brown is not here tonight. Two things I've learned from sitting on the board with him that I'll never forget, is number one, he always looks at what the neighbors say to make up his mind. And I can understand coming in here with an application and not knowing your neighbors and not knowing how things work and, you know, and having your neighbors against you. But when you're turned down and then you have a year to work with your neighbors, talk to them, get to know, and really get to be neighbors for them, and get them to know you and to bring you around, nothing like this was done. I don't see any change here with any of the neighbors. So I remember that from Mr. Brown. So there's been no changes here with the neighbors, and it's just simply a rework of an application here that was turned down by the DCA. And we have this pending ordinance here that we should look at what we worked on and what we did and pay attention to that. But the real thing here is the safety issue. This is a non-conforming setback situation here that's standing there. My concern with this property here the whole time is that it's 26 feet from the road. A kid gets out of the car, happy to be in the country, a dog gets out of the car, goes running, bingo, they both end up in a road and they get hit. You know, if this was, if this property was 10 acres and a house was back towards the rear end of the property, it would be fine. The reason we have these hearings is to recognize that tourist homes do not work at every location, and that there, every community has different standards. And that's why we look at things. And to have this place up right on the road with safety concern, not so much of the neighbors, but the people who are using this home on a rental basis, not knowing the traffic and everything about it, it's a high-risk situation. And it's interesting that they want the permit to run with the property. And the reason for this is that it's just like a beach house. We all see beach houses, arretos, they're vagy, they tell you how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms, and then the next thing is the rental history. It generated $40,000 last year, it generated $70,000, it creates baggage. And, you know, we are seeing more and more people that come into this county, looking to buy a property that are not gonna live there, that are gonna do rentals. We had the property, the people come in on informal basis last year with Ron Schoolman who worked on the Anderson property, below today's property, I feel that you lived here in the acquirement of buying this property, and they were gonna do three rentals like this, and there was gonna be about an $800,000 investment on their part to do a B and B, air B and B rental. Jason Brady sent me an email here within the last month, where a lady contacted him, and she had a business name, and she was looking to buy a number of rentals in the county to do air B and B type rentals. So, you know, this ordinance and these tourist homes were done for people who are gonna live in the property, wanted to have a guest in, have a cozy rural community thing. I don't think it was ever intended to make a motel business in rural areas, and that's what we're looking at doing here. But overall, to me, it's the safety. It's too close to the road, it's not the right place, and we have another application coming up after this. You know, it's a big piece of property, a tourist home on that, that's the kind of thing that we should be looking at, where a big piece of property, 25 acres, have a tourist home, little African, and let them do these number of rentals. It doesn't, it doesn't, that's the thing. So, that's my saying.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe it's just getting late, but this really saddens me a great deal, because I, of course, we had different views when this came up before, so this probably won't come as a surprise anymore. But this feels to me like, people don't want this, and they're gonna throw anything against it, including add-hom and attacks against other members of this commission and the people who own the property and whatever else they can do to stop this. And that's really unfortunate. I do think that the applicant should be commended for making some improvements, obviously a change, they certainly got rid of the fire pit. I didn't hear any kind of acknowledging of the changes that were made. But that being said, you know, the legal issue is around 10 acres or not, obviously, if anybody was around, I opposed the amendment to make it the 10 acres, I don't think it needs to be 10 acres. I think the notion of having more people living there, so you have somebody living there and somebody staying there in order to produce less traffic, is just completely nonsensical. And I think that fundamentally, the unifying thing here is, we don't want people we don't know, which I don't think is really a right that you necessarily have. But, you know, I don't, I don't know what the legal issues are, I'm, the setback concern, if there's some legality or some technical issue there, I wouldn't be sensitive to it. But I thought this was good use before, you know, I didn't love the idea that someone would have bought this property, renovated it, and moved in with their two kids and their dog, but, you know, this property sat there with nobody buying it for a very long time. I think we would have didn't buy it, I don't think. It's suitable for it holds some use. I think this is a very good use for this property. Now, are there safety concerns? Perhaps. I do think there should be a clear local manager. I think that the idea of, say, guidance, just saying, providing the name isn't quite enough. I think that if there's a condition, it should be that there actually be a local manager. So, you know, those are my general thoughts. I'm not sure that I support in light of some of these technical issues, but those are my overall thoughts.
Mr. Wazinski.
Mr. Chairman, I have a rule on Mr. Whitson's request for recuse.
I, being an attorney, but somewhat familiar with the court here, I don't know that there is a conflict of interest, but I would have to defer to the legal counsel on that. That's not a decision for me to make on the legal aspect. It does not appear on either of us to vote as well.
My understanding, my understanding of conflicts of interest is that if you have an economic relationship with the applicant, that you have a conflict of interest. I know in my situation, I have never had an economic relationship with the applicant. That Mr. Wazinski has a building on his property that maybe sometime in the future, he might want to do something with, is a very considerable stretch to feel that he is so mercenary and self-interested that he would use that as his main guideline in this case.
I don't feel I have a conflict, Mr. Chairman.
I guess the one more thing you gotta discuss is that publication always in the paper, there's particularly with the DCA, there's that paragraph there that refers to the applicant or people contacting the DCA member is illegal, blah, 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 blah. It's not really an economic issue, it's issue of influence. But I guess that's, is another conflict there. And I first the DCA there, publication doesn't work with planning commission now, because Bird, this plant is DCA, so I don't know how that fits in.
I should comment again, I know I certainly learned, but I think that what you're getting at is, DCA operates under different operating procedures, you know, that export data communication. I had certainly had conversations with them as a DCA. I think the issue then is whether Mr. Bird spoke to the applicants about their application, which could be considered an export data communication. I don't think it's a conflict of interest question there, as much as it's whether there's an export data communication that is inappropriate.
Well, none of you have stumbled onto the truth, so my suggestion is, you have to go to the county attorney or Commonwealth attorney and get an opinion. That's what the Conflict of Interest Act says, and then they'll explain to you why you do or don't have one.
We're gonna deny the form of our attorney.
What?
We're gonna prove that without a technical.
Well, it's not him, it's the Commonwealth attorney, he's charged with giving you opinions if you have a question. Go ask for it, give you a written opinion.
Our concern is that the applicant hosted a party at which two DCA members attended, and one DCA member had prior conversation with people that they knew why they were there.
We're gonna deny the form of our attorney.
What?
We're gonna prove that without a technical.
Well, it's not him, it's the Commonwealth attorney, he's charged with giving you opinions if you have a question. Go ask for it, give you a written opinion.
Our concern is that the applicant hosted a party at which two DCA members attended, and one DCA member had prior conversation with people that they knew why they were there.
I understand.
It's a concern to us.
Maybe it should be, but I'm not sure that we have a conflict of interest. We can speculate on that. I think Mr. Conick is right, as I suggested earlier, maybe it's, that's a decision or a review for the Commonwealth attorney or the county attorney to take a look at. I think in due faith, moving forward, that I don't, as chairman of this board and hearing this, I don't, I don't see a particular conflict of interest.
So then I have a couple questions for Mr. White then. When you say four evenings per month, are you speaking about four weekends? Four rentals? Do you mean four weekends, or do you mean four?
It could be longer, it could be once, first and rents for two weeks or three weeks. I mean, it is, there will be no more than four rentals per month, however that gets, you know, divvied up. So if somebody takes a weekend and somebody takes, you know, five days or something, okay, that's two, you know, if that's two different people, it's two rentals. So.
Okay, so it's conceivable then with four rentals that you could fill up the whole lot.
You could.
And then with respect to the language in there about the manual, if you will, citing a manager, is there a, is there a management company or an individual that's been, I realize you wouldn't retain anybody until you got approval, but can you speak at all of that? We have in the past, we're waiting to find out, but our intention is that there's somebody in the county every single day that this is rented, a local number, that finishes distance. So that is our intention, but we need to wait till you, obviously, so you can't extend any, all this to anyone until we have.
And it benefits them too, because when they're out of town, you obviously want someone looking at your property. After all, no one wants to come back to their home and fight an issue.
To me, that would be, I would want to see that as a condition.
Yeah.
And that's something we can, I mean, again, language can be directed at them, but it's not an issue.
You know, I am saddened also by some of this. I can see a lot of charged emotion, I see a lot of fear, fear in the unknown. And I just, obviously, from hearing this, and this is my first shot on it on a planning commission, but I was in the gallery the first time it came around, it's pretty obvious that not everybody is gonna be friends and never will. So the idea of going door to door and making friends, I think, once you lawyer up, I think that should be sale. And as far as the tenure is concerned, I don't think this applicant should be penalized by that. I mean, maybe it's a consideration for the future, but it's, I think it's, it's part of this. We have a letter from VDOT. I mean, to me, VDOT letters cut through the emotion and the fear, and if VDOT says that it's acceptable, then that carries credence with me. I am concerned about the number of rentals per month. You know, if we were to move forward on this, I'm not sure four is the right number. I also agree with you that there should be some type of a local management agreement in place as a condition. And I am not sure this is gonna work either, because the applicant is out of the country, and so I would, in a limited period of time, like a year, and then come back and look at it again. If it isn't working, and there are major violations, then we get another bite at the apple. With respect to the concern about the setback, the last meeting, we had the property, the Legacy Farm property, that was an older building, it was a building that was being put in reuse. It never would be built these days because of the setbacks off the Old Hollow Road in 211. So this building is where it is, and it is a, it is a historic building, and there should be something there for the people that don't allow those buildings to fall down. So I'm hoping there's a compromise here, both in a number of rentals and in time allowed. With respect to the change in ordinance about two acres and five acres, yeah, it's not, it's not been voted on yet, it's not been approved. So this applicant, to that test, I don't think it's failed. And until such time that the Board Supervisors passes that, passes that, it gets in the book. That's the way, that's the way it reads. So with conditions that I hope we, the conditions can work on, I'm inclined to try to make it work.
When I approach a problem like this, I think of it as a double-barrelled problem. In the, on the one hand, I feel that I would like to make it possible for landowners to have the reasonable use of their property. And I would like to do this if there were no real and significant damage done to the neighbors. And I approach this from a position of considerable experience in that I have had a tourist home on my farm for nearly four years now. And we charge a damage deposit, I have never collected a cent. The rentals generally are two days. People come on Friday and they leave on Sunday. Not necessarily all the time, but I would say ninety percent or more are like that. What I find surprising in this situation and in many similar situations is that neighbors respond with a fear and an animosity I feel really isn't reasonable or proper that the vacation rental is basically a lesser use than a full-time rental. And that in a case like this, where it's on a state road, where anybody is allowed to drive, you're never going to control the cars that drive by for public access there. And I find it very hard to feel that a significant loss is entertained by people who live half a mile or more away from the property, out of sight and out of earshot. So I would be inclined to recommend this application, it would be suicide sticker.
So a couple of comments here. In terms of the DDOT entrance and their evaluation, they look at the road and they look at the entrance. They don't look at the driveway to see the distance of the house to the road. They just simply look at that public driveway there in the entrance to see if that meets some of the standards. The issue here is that the house is too close to the road, which we thought had no issue with. They don't have any review of that. And that closest to the road is what creates the safety issue. Now with Legacy Farm and with the Old Hollow Store, we had a, we had a building there that it was like a, it needed a new adaptive reuse. It had a little piece of land, it was illegal use, and we was trying to do something that made it viable. Here, you got a house that is viable as a house. It doesn't need to be a rental, a tourist home. It is viable as a house. You can go in there and live three hundred sixty-five days a year from the next date. The viability of this property is not in question. The viability of Old Hollow Store was an issue, and that's why we addressed it to try to make it something that could be used by the owners and the community. Same thing with F2 valid grocery, we struggle with that. But this is perfectly viable for residents who die every day of the year. So, you know.
No, just thinking. I, I guess, yes, I, you know, I agree with Mr. Henry that this situation is different in that respect, but I think the question about the residents or not is, I think that is true, like, you know, it's not up to us to say, you know, you're here and you can't ever rent, so.
It is up to us, that's why they're here.
It is up to us to have.
If we're going to do these tourist houses everywhere, we should just make it a viable use so we don't have to go business, let everybody do it. If you can do it in five winters, if you can do it in a chest of cattle, let everybody do it. I have one way to do this, and it's like Texas. You know, go down to the zoning office and just give it five months, yeah, you know.
Well, if you propose that sometime, go ahead and we can talk about it, but we're not being viewed as a competition anymore. So my point is, my point is, I agree with you on the difference, that the conditions can be different, but, you know, the fact of whether it's viable for them to live here or not, I guess, is the point that it's not really our business, and I don't see how that relates to this. Our business is the impact on the neighbors of volume, noise, transport, not comfort level with how many, you know, safety, safety, safety. I'll say safety, I'm with you on safety. My point is, it's not up to us to determine whether the right thing for these owners to do is to just live in their house like we wish they did.
Well, solve the safety issue, I'll vote for it.
Okay.
Well, I, solve the safety issue, being twenty-six feet from the road, and a kid, dog, soccer ball going through the road, somebody didn't get it.
Whether it was twenty-six or two hundred and sixty, I don't think anybody could ever give that assurance.
Well, twenty-six, the, the, the chance of a mother catching the kid is, is, is pretty short.
It seems to me that we are creating problems that are very unknown and not certain as in this particular situation. If the ordinance said tourist homes need to be more than twenty-six feet away from the highway, that would be a very reasonable reason.
Why, why do you think we have setbacks for? Why do you think we have setbacks?
Well, we don't, we don't have them in populated towns.
Yes, we do.
When people are allowed to live there.
You got setbacks, setbacks warranted. Why do we have setbacks? It's for safety and protection. And here, the setbacks are just less than fifty percent of what they're supposed to be. So our standard is, why do we put in a hundred feet in ag land if it wasn't for a reason? So why don't we just cut it to forty feet or twenty feet and it's illegal? And then everybody can do it. There's a purpose for setbacks.
Well, I think that the general.
Is there a purpose for setbacks?
Well, the general purpose of setbacks is, I think, to keep people from building a ladder against their neighbor and property line and privilege upon a building. I don't think setbacks are primarily for safety. That being said, I'm not questioning.
What, so then there we, so why do we? Now, our godfathers, our godfathers decided here on ag land that a hundred-foot setback should be from the road and fifty foot from the side. Why do they do that if you have more from the road?
If you're asking whether this property should be built as it is today, I say no, because of the setback requirements. But you're dealing with, I have a sense, the house exists, it exists. I think maybe that's, I think the question sort of influenced my view. But I don't think you're saying that there's anything illegal about the property during the integration. Although that's clear to me, but I don't think that's the same.
Chairman, the stress is like the neighbor issue here. I don't think we're going to get your, you know, so maybe you call for the question. I know we haven't heard from you yet, but.
I said earlier, when this application came in, of course, I recommended, recommended approval. And I heard nothing's changed. So as I look at this application, you know, with the DDOT letter, I think there is some value about it. Mr. Henry, you make a good point with regards to maybe sight distance and ingress and egress. So we go ahead and argue, but I don't think it has anything to do with that footage, twenty-six foot from the road. That concerned me a little bit last time, it concerns me now. But what I would say to that is, is if you have a family living there full of time, has a couple of kids, maybe three, there's almost going to be that potential of running out in the road. And the argument there is really get used to it and understand maybe the, the safety issues there. But typically, when things like that happen, you become complacent, you get used to the environment. So then you could use that argument, and if someone is renting that place and has a small child that chases a ball, and it's, I weigh those out equally, you can make those arguments. So it's not the ideal place. It's being an old structure being built way before any of these ordinances and things were established. I think we have to take that into consideration. The, there's a number of properties, Mr. White, with the dots, that I think cleans a few things up. I am concerned because the neighbors are not getting along. This letter that came from Mr. Pullman, Clyde Pullman, he is extraordinarily, extraordinarily friendly. And I put a lot of weight in that because he's been in that hollow a long time. And I know there's a lot of years here, folks residing there. And my heart says, I think I, I remember the statement he made last time, I mean, I like to know who my neighbors are. And I get that, I get that, but I, some of these things, I can't be thinking from the heart necessarily with what is, what is the board, with the code of laws. I'm not totally convinced that this is not a good application. I am concerned about the number of events, I mean, you could have looked that out four weeks. You know, we get a time, every month, so you have, you meet with all the time. I would ask, maybe that'd be a part of discussion about, you can add back two, two a month.
I think you can explain it down to number of days. I think they run it to two people for thirty, like fifteen days each.
And then I was, second item, because I'm a professor, that's where I was going with this. So you come to events back in, in, in the, the days. We'll do it after a week. That's, those are my.
So if you're going to, how about, is this approval going to run with the property or only with the applicant?
If I may, I don't think we have that right. I think the review addresses that. As it's been said, we approve the use, not specific to an owner. And I think that it would be challenging if we said, this is okay for these people to do it, but not the next people who are doing the exact same thing. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems inconsistent. I think the idea of a regular review, you know, whether it's one year or two, maybe four.
I think we've posted applications in the last three or four months where it ran with the applicant, not with the property.
I question those frankly.
I don't recall that, but I stand to be corrected.
I think an annual review gets to the same issue in a more sensible way, because whether these folks have used it or the next people have used it, the review deals with it either way.
You should have, it runs with the applicants, and then if you buy the one from there and take it over, they, they have to come in, tell us what you're going to do, and what our expectations of them here will be.
I think we have a number read on that.
It's one thing to have it here, here in North Washington, down back in Main Street. They sold that as ongoing justice treatment cards, and the application, the permit went with them. But, you know, that was approved as a, you know.
I understand, but having looked at this in the context of some of the rezoning, and looking at some of the jumping, again, I'm dabbling, I'm not a lawyer, I think we should get a legal opinion on this, because they, it's clear that you can't condition something on who owns it. So if we approve the use, we approve the review. That's essentially like saying, well, one of the conditions is that you, how would that be any different than if you say, one of the conditions is you sell this property to, you know, somebody else, because we'd like them to do it, because we trust them. I just don't think that's viable, I'd like to get a legal opinion on it. But you can, you know, if you want to put that in a motion, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I just think it's ill-advised.
So, so it sounds like we need to table it for next month. Two reasons to table it. Number one, question of the BCA government. Question two, whether to go to the property and have a. And table it because of the second. Is that not something we can decide ourselves? I mean, I'm a huge challenge, you know, we saw Dave's advice. I believe you got, you can have it either way. Mr. Bird, the method of voting, do you get an opinion about whether you bought it or not?
Maybe we should do, and it runs with the applicant, and then if that turns out to be illegal, then.
I would like to know, I'd like to have a good answer on that, because as I said before, I have reason.
Could that kind of opinion be arrived at before the BCA meeting next week? Would, is that something we could give to Mr. Doc and have him compile?
You know, it seems to me that if we want to make that, we could make it, whether it's by default or otherwise, obviously, the condition would be that we have, the premise on the building that it's a legal condition, so I don't know. I mean, it's, again, it's like, you don't have to put in the permit that you have to abide by the law. If you put in something that's not legal, then it seems like it would be unenforceable, so.
Given the neighbors at least a little piece of bone here and I would be all.
I'm fine with that. I mean, again, I think it, it's harmless, because it's not legal, it goes away.
And the management contact, contract also, Mr. Chairman, assesses the order.
The requirement, I think their letter said that they publish the name, but I'd like to do.
It's going to be simple, it'd be local, it'd be brought in.
Well, not just that they publish a name, but that they actually engage and have, as a condition of renting, a person who is available. And as it's written now, it just says, we'll give them the name, it doesn't necessarily compel them to have something.
You didn't do the work for Bill Pletcher, why are you going to work for the applicants? It's the same thing.
This is a condition, I understand.
You were talking about the number of rentals a month. Would be related to make a motion, we have two rentals a month. Today's time period, any discussion we have to take?
Fifteen days.
That's. So each month? Two rentals, fifteen days. Two rentals.
That would seem very reasonable to me.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Fifteen days a month.
Fifteen days a month, yeah.
Two, I think the two rentals will be constraining more than fifteen days a month will be from my limited experience. Except in the magic months of May and October.
My experience is that very little happening in December, January, and February anyway.
It's a good point, is this on average or is this in any given month? That doesn't answer the question, whether it's on average or in any given month. You mean in any given month.
Each month, no more than fifteen.
Seems almost fifteen days.
Chairman, I'm going to make a motion. It, we're due special use seventeen oh five oh eight with following conditions. The application, the approval runs with the applicant, we talked about that. A person that is to be published or known from, if you're large to the management, and I don't recall the exact wording.
I would say that they should say that the owners are, must have engaged the services of a local manager for any rental, whoever they're, it could be them if they hear of it. That's why, that would be the condition.
And the condition would be two rentals a month, no more than two rentals a month, and then more fifteen days a month, approximately.
I think the clear way of word that would be in any, in any given month, to get, to avoid the question of whether it's on average over the course of some time, you know, or in any given.
Just some other restrictions in there too, Mr. Chairman, firearms, firearms, fire picks.
I would say you would make others as a concern in the application.
I can, if you need, I can give you the language I gave in my presentation on the two extra I gave, if that would help. I think the language we have, I have five of them in the state justification. Then during my presentation, I had two additional ones.
You had no open fires and no fireworks?
No, right, yeah, renters would not, would be prohibited from discharge fireworks, firearms. They would be prohibited from the open fires. And of course, the special, the special use permit valid for additional, we said two-year period with zoning, Mr. having authority to reduce from subsequent periods to three years.
Three years. And Mr. Zansky, what are you talking about, a year?
Yes, sir, yeah, one year.
Not that I would put it as a condition, but since it occurred to me, I think that gentlemen raised the question of hikers inadvertently going, I think it would be good practice for you in your guidance to do that, to tell them not to do that. Assuming this gets approved, I think we write down this.
Can you maybe read that back to us? I've got a maximum fifteen days a month rental, I have two runs a month, runs with the applicant, the permit has to be, and owner must supply local property manager, supply local property manager, and review after one year. And the conditions that are. Conditions. That have been proffered by. To include those two additions. Chairman, is there any motion?
That's one motion, I would second that motion.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Approve.
Aye.
Approve, sir. Again, we have one more application, so I'm asking you to take your compensation up top.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Desire of tourist home, once can be used allow pursuant food section 1736A, additional standards under the food section 1752 and 1766A. That's true.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can round from the law firm in Walker, and I solemnly vow I will keep my comments very brief, my notes will be lengthy. I just to be sure that everybody is aware, again, the matter before you this evening is the special use permit application for the tourist home slash bed and breakfast meal. The event matter is not before you this evening. Now, this issue relates to an existing log cabin that's on the property of the applicant on Mel Farm, which also adjoins Windsor Lodge Farm. The tourist home use would be limited to the one-and-a-half-story log cottage that consists of one, one large bedroom, two bathrooms, a sitting room, a speaker chamber, and a washer and dryer kitchen facility. And keeping bearing in mind the application that was just before you, this log cabin is located on a fifty-foot-wide right lane that is on Windsor Lodge Lane, that's a private lane, it's within the farm property, and by my rough calculation, is over a third of a mile within the farm itself. So I don't think we have to worry about building setback issues and things of that nature. Rather than go into any more details, you have the application materials in front of you, but I'll specifically address the comments that are in the additional standards that you find in section 1766A. The proposed maximum number of guests at any one time in this structure is four, which is well within the limits set out in additional standard one of twelve. Offspring arcing is reflected in Mr., in the concept plan that was submitted at the time the application was submitted, is immediately adjoining the tourist home, so it's not within any front or side yards of what, right adjoining the log cabin structure. The structure itself, again, photographs submitted with the original materials, it is an attractive single-family log cabin dwelling, satisfying additional standard three. Again, given the property is on, it's on a farm that exceeds several hundred acres, in acreage, we happily can avoid the thorny issue raised by Mr. Kock in our earlier application. The breakfast meal that is to be included in guest stays would be prepared by the log cabin kitchen, either guests can prepare that for, or the applicants can prepare that for the guests. And again, the driveway is within a fifty-foot-wide right away that extends from Jericho Road across the farm to the log cabin structure, satisfying additional standard six. Mrs. Coonley is a resident of this property, so again, her house is not far from the log cabin structure that we're referring to here. She lives there full-time, so we don't have to deal with the questions of absentee owners and the kinds of things that those raise. And the other applicant, Miss Moore, her daughter, she's also at the property a lot, she doesn't desire there as a principal, but she's also there a lot of the time. They're both here this evening and can answer any other questions the planning decision members have. I'll conclude my remarks with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now, open up public comment session for special use, 170507. Mr. Pullman.
I'm Dr. Four, which I live directly across from this proposed tourist home. I don't think there's anybody who's opposed to this, y'all vote on this, go on. I'd be surprised.
Anybody else just being a little backward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Jean Clemons, my husband and I reside in 198 Jericho Road, we're in the Wakefield District, and we enjoy Mrs. Coonley's property long and deep. As you will recall, I am here for a year, I'm a resident of the Center, while I'm here tonight, and my husband and I, we say that we support Mrs. Coonley in this cabin.
I'm Gail Johnson, I live in 1309 Close Road, three or four miles down the road, and I too support it, and I encourage it, and I hope that they approve it, so I can.
I'm Stradens, I'm a neighbor at 453 Red Lake County. I think it's a beautiful and appropriate use of a great log cabin. It's perfect.
My name is Tom Kaufman, I also live in Huntley, in Wakefield, and I do support the use of that cabin. Thank you, sir.
I've been here all night, I was scheduled to. Thanks, Rick.
For being no other public comment, I close public comment session 170507, from the commission itself, which is in the Wakefield District, we have a vacancy at the current moment. Mr. Burke, I'll stop with you.
Yes, I would feel that the neighbors had spoken for me.
I haven't visited the property, it's wonderful, it fits very well with the application, awesome proof. Mr. Light.
I'm just wondering why we had to start with this one? So there are people who would.
Brown, you have a building.
I'm three and a half hours away.
Mr. Brown. I have no questions either, I'm very familiar with that location. Excellent, please. We don't have a quick, I'll move the approval. Mr. Henry has made a motion for proof.
I'll second it, sure.
Mr. Zansky, second. Public comment session, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Approve.
Can y'all start reading, bro, there.
Chair, first to the chair. Tell move.